All right, I'll call to order the common council meeting on April 28th at 7:32. First up is called to order. I'm sorry, the pledge of allegiance, please stand. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock call, please.
Alder Radifrata. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Crowsey. Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Thank you. Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
You have a quorum?
All right, thank you. All right, first up is an item we did not get to last week, but we asked Valerie to come back and speak some more about ethics, Robert's Rules of Order, and all the various important things to know when being on something like common council. Hello Valerie.
Well, hello and thank you. I'm gonna keep this relatively brief because there's a lot of material to cover, but I don't want to take up your entire meeting. I'd just like to take this opportunity to, I guess, first of all introduce myself. I'm Valerie Zussman, I'm the city attorney. And my job is to represent the city in legal proceedings and also to provide the council and the mayor and the department heads with legal advice. So if you have legal questions, please come to me. I'm happy to either tell you the answer if I know it or research it and figure it out if I don't. And I don't always know the answer, but I know generally speaking where to look. So please do keep in mind that my door is always open. So if you have questions, do come to me. Just very briefly, I want to let you know that in representing the city, my role is to represent the city and not each and one of you wonderful folks as an individual. And so I mention that because sometimes people think that there maybe like an attorney-client privilege between an individual alder or a individual department head. And that's not the case. My client is the city of Pittsburgh. And so, you know, if ever we have an issue that we need to discuss and you have any questions about how that confidentiality and privilege would work, I'm happy to talk more about it. But I just mention this because I don't want to give you all the impression that I'm your personal attorney, because I'm not. That's just not what my role is. So that said, I do want to talk a little bit today about a few things. One is open meetings laws, one is public records laws. I'll briefly touch on conflict of interests and also mention a couple of things about Robert's rules. The first thing I'd like to talk to you about is open meetings law. So most of you probably know that there is such a thing as open meetings law, and it's a law in Wisconsin, and I think most states have probably some sort of equivalent. But in Wisconsin, that's called the open meetings law. And basically what it says is that governmental meetings have to be open, they have to be accessible, and they have to be noticed to the public so the public knows that they're happening. What that means really in practical terms is that the decisions that you make as alders on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh and the discussions that you have that lead to those decisions have to take place in a properly noticed meeting. And that's important because if that doesn't take place, if these discussions take place outside of a properly noticed meeting, then somebody could either file a complaint with the district attorney or the Department of Justice and potentially sue you personally or the city or some combination thereof in circuit court for violation of that law. And so if you ever have specific questions about it, I'm happy to talk more about it. But really, the big items for you to be aware of right off the bat are that if there are items that aren't on the agenda that you really want to talk about during a council meeting, you really need to make sure that you let Pat Marsh and Tracy Oldenburg know that you want something on the agenda. And the way I usually see that come up most often is that somebody will appear on a non-agenda item, like somebody from the public, and want to discuss something that isn't on the agenda. And it may be something that you absolutely want to talk about and it's worthwhile to discuss. The problem we have is that if we don't put it on the agenda, then the public doesn't know that the discussion is about to take place. And so we can get into trouble that way. So what I would suggest you do if you hear somebody bring up something during a meeting that isn't on the agenda is that you make a note or make a request to the city administrator and the clerk to add that item to the agenda so that it can be discussed at the following meeting or some meeting down the road. And while we're on the topic of the agenda, I just want to mention to you, most of you probably aren't as familiar with the process of getting things on the agenda. And so I just want to mention to you that while the mayor and the city administrator generally put together the agenda, two alders can request to have an item added to the agenda. That's part of our Pittsburgh ordinances. And so the way that would work is that you would want to make sure that you let the clerk know that you have two of you that want to add something to the agenda, and you have to do it by the deadline for putting the agenda together. And that means that if you have an ordinance or a resolution that you want it added, that you add it by Thursday at noon of the week before the meeting. So for example, the deadline for this meeting would have been last, this past Thursday at noon. And it's really, putting together the agenda is a pretty time extensive process for staff. And so we really need to make sure we have enough time to properly put the agenda together, vet it, review it, and then publish it. And then that notice has to go out to the community again as part of that open meetings law. I also want to touch on the issue of quorum. I think some of you have already asked me a couple of questions about quorum. And those of you who haven't yet, I'm sure this issue will come up. Basically, the idea of a quorum is, and where it presents a problem for us, is that if you have a gathering of alders or commission or committee members that is sufficient to determine the government's body's course of action, then that needs to be properly noticed. So in other words, let me give you an example. If you have a simple majority, then your quorum would be one half, right? So that would be four alders. But keep in mind that there are some situations where fewer alders could potentially constitute a quorum or actually what we call a negative quorum. I think I shared an article with you last week about, that was in the paper, about the Madison city attorney and a letter that he had issued to their alders. And if you haven't taken a look at that, take a look at it. But basically, the idea of a negative quorum is that if you have enough people to block an action, that can constitute a negative quorum. And there are some kinds of actions that require supermajority, so more than half the votes. For example, one of the things we've recently been through is the comprehensive plan update. To amend the comprehensive plan, you need five yes votes, regardless of how many alders are actually present at the time of voting. Another example would be a budget amendment where you need two-thirds of a vote of the council in order to pass a budget amendment. So if you need two-thirds of a vote of the council in terms of votes, that's six yes votes. That means just three alders could block a measure. And that is what a negative quorum is, okay? So if that explanation makes sense, and if not, let me know and we can talk more about it. So if a measure requires supermajority, quorum or negative quorum could be as few as three alders. So please just be careful when you discuss items. That's why we only require two alders to sponsor a resident or an amendment. And really, even if you think more than two alders might be interested in sponsoring an amendment, I would encourage you to not try to find multiple sponsors because we can quickly get into trouble. The other question or the other issue that sometimes comes up is this idea of a walking quorum. In a walking quorum, basically, an example would be if an alder says to another alder, hey, I'd like to have this measure, whatever it is, would you be in support of that? And that alder says, yes, I would be in support of that. Okay, so now you have two alders, no problem, not a quorum at all, not a problem with open meetings law. But then one of those alders goes to a third alder and says, hey, Alder Juan and I have been discussing this issue. What are your thoughts about that? And would you vote for that? And that alder says, yeah, absolutely, I think that's a great idea. And then that alder, or any one of those three now, goes and calls or meets up for a drink with a fourth alder, and you get the idea. So that's the idea of a walking quorum. So you're not meeting all in one place at once, but in effect, you're conducting a meeting outside of a properly noticed meeting. That can present a problem as well and potentially get us all into big trouble with the courts. So we don't want to do that. The other question that has come up recently, and so I want to address that as well, is the idea of a social gathering. So social gatherings are not subject to open meetings laws. And what I mean by that is that when the stay-at-home order is finally lifted, we may all want to go to a bar for a drink. Or some of you may want to attend a retirement party for one of the employees at the city. Or perhaps you'd like to invite each other to a birthday party. That's just fine. We're not here to tell you that you're not allowed to meet with each other outside of council meetings. That would just be plain silly. You have to be careful when you see each other in a social setting, that you stay away from social business and discussions about that because again, they can quickly spiral into something that might violate open meetings laws. So if you want to go for a drink or have a barbecue, absolutely. Talk about your favorite sports team, talk about your kids, talk about your dogs, talk about your hobbies, all of that is just fine. Just keep the conversation about city business to the city meetings. That's all I ask of you. The other thing I'd like to talk to you a little bit about today, well, I guess I'll pause here. Does anyone have any questions about the open meetings portion? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to public records. So public records is sort of the left hand, if you will. Open meetings is the right hand and public records is the left hand, or vice versa, however you want to look at it. And the idea is that the community and the public can request to view government records, and the government has an obligation to provide those. Now, there's a whole number of exceptions and exemptions to those records. And so I think to suggest that absolutely anything that you ever write would be subject to the law, but it is broad and it is meant to be construed pretty liberally. And so what that means is that when you send an email to each other or to anyone else, a constituent, a developer, a business owner, city staff, those emails can consti- will constitute a public record. And somebody could request that record, and you have the obligation to turn it over. Now, if you send emails using city email servers, staff will take care of handling those records for you. We have an IT department and we have software that can search messages. Your department and I go through them to make sure that we don't turn over any information that would be not subject to open meetings laws. And then we handle the production of those documents on your behalf. However, if you send emails using your personal email or using your cellphone and you send texts, those, if they're about city business, will constitute records. We will not turn those over on your behalf because we don't have access to them. We don't have software that can interface with your various personal email addresses. We don't recover text messages from personal cellphones. And so it becomes your own obligation. All public records requests really ultimately are your obligation because as an elected official, you're all custodians of your own records. But if you send emails via city servers, we will handle that for you. If you don't use city servers, that will become your obligation to handle yourself. And so if you don't want to be stuck waiting through a whole pile of emails trying to produce the correct ones, if you don't want to have to go through your phone, if you don't want to have to keep your records for upwards of seven years because that's how long these records are required to be kept, if you're not sure that you're going to even have the same phone or the same phone plan, for all those reasons, I would ask you and suggest to you that you should probably do as much as you can using your city email rather than your personal email or your text messages. Again, you're custodians of your records. I'm not here to tell you what to do. And I guess backing up to who I am and what I do, I'm here to provide you with advice. I'm not the enforcement of any of this. If somebody has a complaint, it's not me that they will come to. It's going to be either the district attorney's office or the Department of Justice. I'm not here to tell you when you've been bad or to scold you or to force you to do things any particular way because that's not, that's not my job and that's not really what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to just help guide you and provide you with advice. So if you want my advice, I would say, don't text and don't use your personal email at all. Keep everything that's city business on city servers and then you don't have to even worry about it when there is an open record. I'm sorry, was there a question or?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, very good. I'll just touch very briefly on conflicts. But basically, if you think you have a conflict of interest and that really has to do with some kind of conflict between either your position in your employment or a business that you own or a board that you sit on in city business, just come talk to me and we can talk through it. Ultimately, you really just, you're not allowed to use your position as an elected official to benefit yourself in a personal capacity or an organization that you're associated with. And so if you have questions, absolutely, come talk to me. I'm happy to work through those and provide you with some advice. And then one last thing I want to mention is as far as Robert's Rules of Order. I put some materials in that packet that I think got distributed to you last week. Take a look at it, it's a lot to learn. The League has an excellent training. I believe they cover Robert's Rules of Order as well. It's called Local Government 101, I think. And so if you're interested in attending that, I think they're doing them via webinars currently. I think they also have in-person trainings, but probably not right now for a while. So I would encourage you, especially if you're new, to check out those trainings. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities is an excellent resource in terms of providing that. If you have any questions, specific questions about Robert's rules or conflicts, like I said, just dial me up and I'm happy to talk to you. That's, that's my 15-minute spiel and I'm happy to answer questions.
Valerie, I have one question then, looks like Julia has a question. If someone's going to recuse themselves from something on the agenda, is that something they should be saying at the very beginning of discussions so that the public knows, hey, I'm not part of this, I'm stepping back, I'm not going to vote on it? Is that something they should be saying right up front?
Yes, absolutely. If you have a conflict of interest and you're going to recuse yourself, you shouldn't participate in any of the discussion as well. The idea is that you're basically saying, hey, I'm not even touching this, I'm just walking away. I mean, really, if you want to, you can just get up and walk out of the room while that item is pending. If you're abstaining from voting for some reason, not because of a conflict, but just for whatever personal reason that you may have, that's a little bit different. But if you're recusing based on a conflict, you should not participate in any discussion at all.
All right, thank you. Julia?
Yes, can you, Valerie, explain the reply to all too? How we, when we're using the email?
Oh, absolutely, I'm really glad you brought that up. So when we were talking about walking quorums, I had mentioned calling somebody up or talking to them in person. But that very thing can also happen when you do it via email. Long ago, the Department of Justice said, look, when you write letters to people, it's just so far removed from the moment that you send it to somebody actually receiving it and reading it that it can't possibly constitute a meeting or it would be very unlikely to constitute a meeting. That's very different with email communication. And the reason is that it's so quick, it's basically instantaneous. And if you send a message to your fellow alder and that fellow alder turns around and replies to you in real time, you can essentially have a conversation via email, very much like text message. Be very careful in doing that for two reasons. One, first of all, you don't know where that email is going to go. So like, much like a walking quorum, if one of you emails another and then that second person forwards that email to a third person and that third person forwards it to a fourth person, and at each point, you're having some substantive discussion, that really starts looking like a meeting. For that very reason, you also should not reply all to messages because again, that starts looking a whole lot like a conversation. So for example, I sent all of you an email saying, hey, this case, we, let's say we were being sued for something and that case was dismissed. That's not at all a problem because the staff, I can communicate with all of you. The problem becomes if one of you replies and replies to everybody and starts just having a discussion on some sort of substantive issue. Now, that said, if you want to reply all and say that's great news, that's not really a problem. But if you reply with, that's excellent to hear and oh, by the way, we really should look into changing our ordinance so that these kinds of things don't happen again, and then a second person pipes up and says, oh, that's absolutely a great idea. We should also tackle these other three issues. And each time you're replying all, you now have essentially a very full quorum. It's not just quorum, you're replying all to a full council. So when you see emails, especially when you see emails that are addressed to mayor, council and mayor, please be very careful. If you want to reply, please reply, don't reply all. And for that very reason, generally speaking, just don't include more than one other alder in your communication unless you have a really good reason. And again, if you're nervous about it, if you're not sure, can I send this, should I send this, should I have this conversation? Just call me and I'll be happy to walk through it with you.
Dorothy has a question as well.
Thank you. Valerie, I know that some things are kind of exempt, like you can have back and forth among everyone talking about how to schedule meetings and such. That, are there other things that would be in that list of things that you can?
Well, I think a general rule of thumb is if it's procedural in nature, it's fine. So yes, if you're talking about scheduling, that's not a problem. If you're talking about wanting something on the agenda, that's probably fine too. But the closer you get to the meat of it and for expressing support or the substance of what you're talking about, the bigger trouble we can get into essentially. So if you want to send a message and ask all the old fellow alders if they're available on a date to discuss whatever, I think that's okay. If you're talking about logistical things, can we see it on the agenda? When are you out of town, when are you back? These kinds of things are fine. But if you're talking about, and where do you stand on this issue? That's where we get into trouble. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, thank you Valerie. I know there's one item you're going to hang on for. We'll do that right after consent agenda. I'll ask someone to move that up. All right, next is public appearances, non-genre items, and appointments. The first thing is one last reappointment, and that is Ed Kenny on Plan Commission. Ed has been on Plan Commission for over 20 years. He lives in District Four. One of the unique pieces about Plan Commission is that every district has to have a representative. And then we also need one person who's outside the urban service area. And so Ed fulfills both the District Four role and being outside the urban service area. There's five people on Plan Commission, so then one district ends up having two people. That's District One, who has two people right now. So this needs to be someone in District Four outside the urban service area. But I know that he's been on the commission for a long time and staff is very favorable of him. But if there's any questions or anything like that, I can answer those, Tom.
I just want to follow up, the mayor said there a little bit in reference to this one. Randy and I have the biggest district in the city. And obviously, we have the majority of the farmers. We have a lot of rule-setting. In this appointment, I also bring this up, just a couple of words, a couple of comments on this one. And one is, not only do I have District Four, one of the biggest ones in representing what I just talked about, but I also want to represent the citizens that I voted me in. And this is an individual that has served very well. But he has been there a long time, and 20 years is a long time. This has come up with two alders sitting on this council, and you know who you are, I'm not going to call you out. One was that we should have a woman on the Plan Commission. There's no women on Plan Commission right now. The second one is, someone had stated that we should have term limits. That's for a different day. It's for a different day. But here's an individual that has served well, as the mayor said. 20 years is a long time. I had two phone calls in, I will, I will end it with this. I had two phone calls, one from a lady and one from another gentleman that wanted to be on the Plan Commission. But when they saw what the mayor had done, they decided not to put their application in. I know most of you heard me say this before. If you want to put your application to a committee, do it, do it. I don't care if it's full or about to be filled or your neighbor next door tells you, well, I'd really like to be on the Parks Commission, but it's full. Tell them no, put your application in. So with that being said, I just want you to know with this appointment for this individual, it'd be 23 years on the same committee. I think that's a long time. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Tom. I do want to actually mention two things Tom reminded me of based on our conversations last week. We did change the wording on the website where you can apply for these things and edit it so it's a little more clear that you can apply at any time. We'll hang on to your application for a couple of years. So we did change that to make it a little more clear that even if there's an opening, please feel free to fill it out. And then we actually also changed and added a field on the form itself so that if, right, previously, you could only apply for one at a time, one committee at a time. And there's now a box on there where you can fill in if there's other committees that you're interested in as well. So you know, might have, your first choice might be, you know, Plan Commission. But if you also want to be on Transportation, Transit, and RCC, you can actually now fill that in as well. So I'll thank Lisa, she's not here, but she, I got that, those changes for me. So that said, I actually probably should have started with asking for a motion to approve Ed before we discussed it. So if someone wants to make that motion and then we can talk about it more, that would be great. Julia? Yeah, Julia?
Yeah, I will follow up with what Tom said. And I want to mention that Ed Kenny is not the only one that has had been more than 20 years in a commission. So maybe this is something that we need to revise if we need to put some limit in the terms, you know? Something what we, this council, we'd like to discuss in the future.
So we can, yeah, I think that's something that we can talk about maybe in a couple of months when new people kind of get their feet wet. We can't really talk about term limits right now, that's not the agenda item. I do know that just on this person, it's over 20 years. But we do want to make sure, and again, I need a motion on Ed before we have further discussion.
Motion to approve Ed Kenny?
Thank you, is there a second? All right, I heard a second. All right, now, further discussion on Ed, being on Plan Commission or not. Yeah, Julia?
Yeah, I want to mention that I, you know, I, when I was in Plan Commission, I worked with Ed. I think he's like a Wikipedia on planning, on plan. He knows every single detail. I think he's an asset for the commission, for the plan as a commissioner. And he's also willing to help the new commissioners too. And, you know, and you know, and I think he's a great asset for the commission. And even though he has been working there for more than 20 years, for some people could be, you know, you know, some people, they have disagreement on how long a person should be in there, you know, serve. But I had the opportunity to work with Ed in Plan Commission and, you know, and I think he's great. He's a Wikipedia, you know, he knows what he's talking. And I think he's a good addition for the Plan Commission.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I tend to agree with that as well. Particularly, we've had a lot of staff turnover in the planning department. And he without a doubt has been teaching staff a lot of what he knows as well. So I'd like to keep him at least for another go-round.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we can go to a vote. All in favor of approving Ed, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. All right, going to new appointments, so let's take these one at a time. If someone would like to do a motion for Jason.
Motion to approve Jason Strauss?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. All right. So Jason did give me a paragraph. Uh, thank you. All right. Uh, so Jason did give me a paragraph here I can read. He lives in district three, I can tell you that. My name is Jason Strauss. I grew up in Milwaukee in ten eighty-two Madison with degrees in biochemistry, chemistry, and education. The Madison area has been my home for the last twenty-eight years and Pittsburgh for the last five. I was always taught to give back to the community. That is why I chose to be a teacher in the Verona area school district for twenty-two years. I have three children, ages nine, seven, and two. Pittsburgh has given my family so much that it is my turn to give back. I'd be more than happy to serve in whatever pa- capacity I can. Thank you, Jason Strauss. So again, uh, he's a high school teacher in Verona High School, so he's very familiar with lots of Pittsburgh kids that goes to school there. Any questions at all? Julia?
Yes, I would like to know why he's so, uh, you know, as a teacher, why he's interested in this committee instead of other ones, you know, like a library board or, you know, and so why transportation, that he has any background in transportation or, you know, I don't know, I didn't, I, I didn't see his application, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think there was two or three things he was interested in, and, um, this just happened to be one of them. He didn't give further explanation, and it's just something that interested him. I would imagine that some, well, I don't want to speculate. I was gonna say, some of the kids he teaches probably face transportation issues, but I don't want to speculate on that. Yeah, go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, I, you know, um, my personal opinion when we bring people to this commission, uh, is that they should have any, um, any background in the area, in the commission that they are, you know, applying. So I don't know if we, if we are revising the application forms for future, we can add something like, tell us, if they are applying for a particular committee, if they can tell us what are the skills that they're bringing to that committee in particular, you know what I mean? So, that's all.
All right, Dorothy?
Yeah, I'd also like to, I, I wish that it was more reasonably possible in these times to actually meet and have an opportunity to talk to and get a sense of people. I'd also be interested in what his concerns are about transportation, particularly in, um, if, if he's representing a lot of the kids up in district one in the Verona school area, what he would be able to tell us about the difficulties that his kids and families have, say, are parents able to get down to parent-teacher conferences and things like that? What, what kind of transportation issues does the school experience? Unfortunately, he's not here and we can't ask him questions like that.
Yeah, like I mentioned last week, typically, pre- pre-years, we would have people come in, but with COVID, it just didn't seem very responsible. That's why he sent in his paragraph. Anything else?
Maybe, uh,
Joe?
Just easy way to, oh, sorry. Still getting used to, um, I, maybe, uh, maybe a good way during while we're doing Zoom, is maybe if we bring up somebody for appointment, we could see if they could zoom in and just maybe respond to any questions that somebody might have. Might be a simpler fix.
Yeah, we could try that for future.
Yeah.
All right. Seeing nothing else then. All in favor of approving Jason Strauss, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Next up is Ronald French for RCC. If someone would like to make a motion on this.
Motion to approve Ronald French?
Second.
All right, second, thank you Randy. All right, and he actually emailed me some information as well. My name is Ronald French, and my wife Anne French has been residents of Pittsburgh for over four years. I am a senior ecologist with over thirty years in the environmental field. I've assisted many municipalities throughout the United States with stormwater management, solid waste recycling, wetland deline- delineations, environmental assessments, and risk assessments. Currently, I am owner of a veteran-owned small business based in Pittsburgh. When my wife, wife and I located the Madison area, we fell in love with the city of Pittsburgh on our first visit and knew this is where we wanted to live. We are outdoor folks and we really appreciate all the parks and trails that are found in the Pittsburgh area. We like how the city has made tremendous effort to create a city with a passion for all that is homegrown, sustainable, and community-oriented. We enjoy the weekly visits to the farmer's market, exploring the neighborhood parks and cycling on the many bike trails that surround the city. We appreciate having the recycling center where we can recycle perishables and non-perishable items. An excellent job the city does in collecting our yard and brush waste. Our dog really enjoys the new Pittsburgh dog park, and we are thankful to have that in many so close to our home. Living in an environmentally friendly city was one of the requirements that was important to us when choosing our next home. And the city of Pittsburgh has met that expectation. As a potential member of the Resource Conservation Commission, I'd like to offer my expertise to help maintain, improve, and protect the environmental resources within the city. I believe it's important for citizens to play an active role in their community, and I'm hoping that I can provide a progressive, environmentally concerned perspective to the position and make the city of Pittsburgh an even better place to live, recreate, and raise a family. Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with you and others to help protect our precious environmental and natural resources. Sincerely, Ron French. All right, so he was a little more thorough in his expertise and background. Dorothy?
And I completely agree, the background as stated completely fits the committee that he's asking to join. So I, I would be happy to say yes to him.
All right. Julia?
Yes, I had the opportunity to do some search and I found out about his website and what he does. And I think that this would, uh, this person is a very good fit for that committee. He's a, you know, he's a knowledge and expertise and, you know, he's aligned with the commission, so I don't have any problem.
All right. Seeing no one else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right, that is approved as well. All right, can I have someone do a motion for Tom O'Day, please?
I move to approve Tom O'Day.
I second.
All right, thank you. And Tom's actually here. I know he, uh, has a couple of things he wants to say for himself. I did want to, before he, uh, does speak here, I just wanted to, again, clarify the rules, and not the rules, but the role of the Police and Fire Commission. I know there were some questions about their role last two week, last week. And so summary duties, the PFC appoints the police and fire chief. They approve written protocol on hiring, promotion, suspension, demotion, and termination. And approve or disapprove the appointment of any subordinate by the police or fire chief. Additionally, they distribute all rules relating to examination and qualification of police officers and firefighters. Conduct examinations for appointments to the police or fire department. They suspend, reduce, and rank, or remove the police or fire chief, or any firefighter or law enforcement personnel for cause after hearing on charges filed with the board in accordance with state statute. So it's pretty much the police department, fire department, hiring, firing, disciplining the, all staff really. Tom, why don't I turn it over to you? I know you had some things you wanted to talk about.
Sure. So you have the pleasure of having two attorneys speak with you tonight, so thank you for the opportunity to come back. Um, I was here last week in the room, um, had a chance to hear some of the discussion and appreciate having the opportunity to address some of the concerns and then also to answer questions. I watched the discussion that you had about my nomination to the Police and Fire Commission last week. I heard Alder Gerhart speak about how she was interested in the Parks Commission, um, that the spot was filled, I think, when you were looking to inquire further. I heard Alder Aratafara indicate her desire to have more people volunteer and apply for these positions to serve the city. And I'm here for the second week in a row raising my hand to serve as a member of the Police and Fire Commission here in Pittsburgh. So I know many of you have questions. Um, I had the chance to talk to Alders Gerhart and Alder Udell on the way out of the meeting last week, and for that, I'm really appreciative. I had time to share with them the personal reasons why I want to serve the city on the Police and Fire Commission. And, um, you know, I appreciated the fact that I could tell Alder Gerhart that you read the application. I really appreciate that. I won't go into the detail about why I'm interested in the position individually. Um, it's in my application, that was in the board packet. But I, I do want to have a chance to, um, highlight my skill set, um, the value that I bring as a member of the Police and Fire Commission here in Pittsburgh. So as the mayor mentioned, the Police and Fire Commission does not run the day-to-day operations of the Police and Fire Departments. The city has elected not to grant those powers to the commission. Instead, the PFC plays a relatively limited but a very important role with respect to police and fire. And in short, it's engaging in hiring, firing, discipline, and investigation. And those acts, each one of those, hiring, firing, investigation, and discipline, are acts that I'm involved with on a regular basis in my day-to-day job. As a labor and employment attorney here in, in the state of Wisconsin, I work every day with these issues. And that's the skill set that I'll bring to the service of the city of Pittsburgh. So I also want to address what I heard last week while I was sitting here in the crowd waiting for my nomination to be taken up. To start, I heard that there were concerns about the first Aldermanic District, which has the most, um, significant level of crime. And I heard that someone from that Aldermanic District will best understand the needs of the district with respect to police and law enforcement. And I heard that, that only someone from that district would understand the needs of the entire city with respect to crime. But district two, district three, and all the other Aldermanic Districts also have their share of crime that affects everyone within the city. So just late December of two thousand nineteen, um, we engaged and had here not far, an armed robbery of a gas station on Sayin Road. Crime is not just, significant crime is not just something that's limited to that first Aldermanic District. The gas station clerk, the new owner, not necessarily the old owner, but the new owner of the gas station, and any customers that were there when this place was robbed by two individuals with masks, with guns, do not care if their police and fire commissioner is from one Aldermanic District or the other. Now, this is a personal issue for me. My family member's house burned to the ground here in Pittsburgh, literally burned to the ground. And members of my family thankfully were able to get out. The house itself was a, I think, a total loss. And what I heard from my family members was that Chief Pulvermacher was a, a significant value to them getting through that time of difficulty. And for that, I'm very appreciative. And for that, because of that, I want to serve. It wasn't far from here where we had the house blow up on Cheryl Drive, still in district two. I remember where I was at the time, probably a lot of you remember where you were at the time, because I literally, in our basement of my house playing sports with my son, I remember the house shaking to the foundations. And I remember my wife coming down and saying, what are you doing in the house? And it's a significant incident that occurs outside the first Aldermanic District, but still impacts people across the city of Pittsburgh. I don't think that any PFC commissioners at that time, because they live in Aldermanic District one, or Aldermanic District three or four, had any less reason or were any less capable of handling their responsibilities because of where they lived. Not long ago in Leopold School, not far from Leopold School, a school that's my neighborhood school, um, a man was shot multiple times on Post Road. Ten minutes later, multiple rounds were shot into an apartment building, just a little ways away from our neighborhood school, just a mile away from my house. That impacts me as an individual, as a citizen of the city of Pittsburgh. A year later, approximately five-thirty at night, more shots were fired right there in that block of Leopold Way. And again, the people who were shot, the apartment renters who had their apartment shot up, they don't care if the PFC commissioner lives in their Aldermanic District or another within the city. The idea that I wouldn't be able to fill this solemn role on the PFC because I don't live on the right side of Cannonball Trail or someone else just isn't right. So I understand that there is crime in the city. I understand that in district one in particular, um, there is a significant level of crime, and that, that is of concern to me. And I mentioned in my application that pretty much every day I drive down, um, every weekday and every Sunday, drive down Thurston Lane, drive down multiple times every week, and it, it bothers me that there's that level of crime in the city, and I want to be part of the solution. So I submitted my application in two thousand eighteen, not long after, there were five shootings in one week, five shootings, pretty much in one, a one-block radius. And again, that bothers me because I drive that street. And now every time I drive that street, I need to question whether or not I'm putting myself or the safety of my kids and other family members in jeopardy. It wasn't far from there where three kids drove a car into a house. I'm not quite sure if it was a sto- it was a stolen car that was driven into a house after law enforcement pursued it. The sixteen-year-old made it out, tried to get away and was arrested by Pittsburgh's finest. The two fourteen-year-olds who were in the car were apparently injured seriously and likely couldn't even try and run for breaking, broken legs or whatever it might have been. Now, one thing this article mentioned at the bottom there was that these two fourteen-year-olds had, quote, "both been arrested multiple times in connection with stolen vehicles." And I wonder whether they're back on the streets now. I wonder whether they're back in my neighborhood and your neighborhood wreaking havoc and causing trouble in our city. I don't need to live in a particular neighborhood in order to want to serve this city. And I don't certainly need to live in a particular neighborhood in order to be affected by crime in the city. Now, second, I heard Alder Maldonado indicate that he was interested in having someone serve on the Police and Fire Commission who's a social justice warrior, someone who understands the tension between police and individuals within the community, and I, I respect that. One of the things I love about our Police and Fire Commissions is their engagement in the community. I love this picture of Chief Brecklin making a significant level of outreach into the community. I appreciate and understand the tension that does exist. And I appreciate and understand the actions Chief Brecklin and individual police officers across the city take to reach out to the city and the community and the citizens. In fact, one of those times I was driving down Thurston Lane, probably not long after the five shootings, I remember seeing a police cruiser pulled over and a police officer in full uniform playing football with some of the kids right there in the community. That's what I love, and that's the way I think is best to try and ease some of that tension. We have strong charitable organizations in the city of Pittsburgh, in the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative area. And I think it's important to continue to work with them to highlight the great things that law enforcement does here in the city of Pittsburgh. I don't believe that a social justice lens is necessary to serve. I think it's enough to treat all people fairly regardless of color, race, disability, national origin, or any other protected characteristic. But the tension's not just limited to race. This is a picture of Doc, of Chief Brecklin talking with the Highlands of Seminole neighborhood, my neighborhood, after significant concerns about crime. And I think the words here scream tension just as much as any of the other headlines that we've seen. Quote, "high-profile incidents, police had to assure the neighborhood that it's safe." And I think Alder Aratafara, you were one of the people who promoted this event, so for that, I thank you. But just because Alder Aratafara and I live in district two doesn't mean that we're not affected by crime. And just because we live in district two doesn't mean we can't understand that tension between police and the community. So again, um, Alder Maldonado, you, you said you're interested in someone who, who is, um, looking through things with a social justice lens, um, someone who believes in restorative justice. I am not a social justice warrior. I believe in a strong, vibrant, and supported police force. I believe in a strong, vibrant, and supported fire department. I do not assume that every police contact is nefarious, or that every criminal who spins a tail is telling the truth. But I can tell you that I will be fair, respectful to all, and that I'll carry out my duties without bias. And it's a role I play every day as an attorney. And it's interesting, I had to pull up my attorney's oath that I took just under fifteen years ago. And I can make the promise to you that I will live the same oath of fairness for the city of Pittsburgh as a police and fire commissioner. I'm very supportive of community events to relieve the tension that Alder Maldonado and others referenced. In my career as an advisor to human resources professionals, I'm often involved in training and education, and those are important components of a successful workplace. And I understand they're important components of a successful city as well. I fully support the activities and proactive efforts of the police and fire community to get out into the neighborhoods to ease whatever tension there might be. But I also support the police in what they do, understanding that the role as a PFC commissioner is a neutral arbiter of disciplinary issues, hiring, and firing. And finally, it's, it's important- And finally, it's important to recognize that it's okay to disagree. I can be respectful of a difference of opinion. And I understand that Alder Aratafrada, you in particular had concerns about my party affiliation as a Republican. And I think all of you know that state statute and your individual ordinances require a balance of diversity of opinion on the Police and Fire Commission, something that's required by state law and required by City of Fitchburg Ordinance Chapter Six. Again, the cashiers who are involved in our robberies don't care if their PFC Commissioner is a Republican, a Democrat, a Libertarian, or a member of the Green Party. The Dollar Tree employees who were robbed just a few weeks ago don't care if I live in District One or District Two. And just this morning, we all woke up to news about a stabbing less than 24 hours ago, and I'm sure that individual who was stabbed multiple times doesn't care if I'm a Republican seeking to serve the city of Fitchburg. So again, I appreciate the time that Alders Udell and Gerhart took after the meeting last week to understand my interest and my candidacy. I understand and appreciate Alder Strossman calling and reaching out by phone this week to discuss my candidacy. I fear if I dig deeper that I've been singled out not only because of my resume, or not because of my resume, or the need to have geographic representation on the Police and Fire Commission, but I fear I've been singled out because of my political party. And that's disappointing. I didn't interject partisanship into this discussion, and I hope that partisanship won't be part of the decision-making process. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Questions for Tom? Can't see the people online. All right, now I can see everyone. I don't know if someone raised their hand or not, I couldn't see it up to this point. Any further questions at all for Tom? Or discussion? Dorothy?
Thanks for being here, Tom.
Sure.
In your application, you wrote about your loved one expressing a determination not to stop at gas stations on Fish Hatch, and said that that further solidified your desire to be part of a solution. I'd like to know what that solution would look like for you.
Sure. So I understand the limited role of the Police and Fire Commission. The city's made the decision not to have the Police and Fire Commission work with day-to-day operations. My role would just be to make sure that we hire good police and fire officials. It would have, I'd have a role in investigating any alleged discipline, making sure that we're a neutral arbiter of those cases. And then it would just be a role making sure that, more than anything, I'm there to support police, fire, and the community as a whole.
So your part, your desire to be part of solution is limited to the hiring and firing role that you would be part of?
Sure, right. Part of the role on the Police and Fire Commission.
And you would take no part in anything involving the type of people that we're looking to hire or anything like that?
Well, no more, I wouldn't treat anyone differently than I would treat any other individual, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I guess the question comes to, you say you like to see the police out playing, playing ball with the kids. I do too. But there are some people who want to have absolute top-down control and want to make those kids do what they want them to do, period. That's two completely different policing styles. I want to make sure that the people that we're working with are far more interested in bringing people on board that want to play ball with the kids.
Sure. Oh, absolutely. I think the interaction between police, law enforcement, and fire officials in the community is really important. Again, I'd love to leverage the charitable organizations, Boys and Girls Club being the one top of mind, to make sure that we're continuing to do that within Fitchburg.
You're going to have to get the Boys and Girls Club to actually work with the problem kids then, because once they don't like kids, they just push them aside.
Oh, I have every trust in Boys and Girls Club, but yes, let's work together on that.
Absolutely.
I have Julia, you had a question as well?
So, Tom, thank you for, you know, for coming back.
Sure.
And I know that I shared with the mayor my concern about your affiliation with a party, and I assume that the mayor made that comment to you. My concern was, you know, I really believe that we need to have diversity of thought in commissions. I really believe that we need to have people with a skill to be in a specific commission and committees. And I think they are a lawyer. I had the opportunity to talk to people that are members of the committee, and they are, they told me that they are sad that they are, you know, one of the members that is living is a lawyer, and this committee is, really need to have a lawyer, you know, it's good to have a person with your skill. So, so my only concern about your affiliation, it was not because, you know, you know, I have friends from, they are different parties, okay? So it's not like because you are, I consider because this is, this is a committee that two of the biggest unions are represented in this committee. It was about what is your position about labor unions, you know what I mean? And how, you know, even though you're not going to participate, or the Police and Fire Department Commission doesn't participate in the union contract at all, you know, but that one was my biggest, you know, concern about because, you know, the Republican Party is, you know, has shown that, you know, they are kind of against unions. So that one was my, I want to clarify my position, but I don't have any issue to, that you, you know, about your political views in this committee. I think it's good to have people with different opinions, to have healthy discussion. I think that your, you know, your expertise as a lawyer is going to be great for the committee. One other question that I want to ask you is because we are trying to, because you're going to be, this committee is very important in the hiring process, okay? So one of the things that I have been pushing from the personal committee that was part, and since I represent a group in the community, Latinos, so is how we can diversify more our forces, specifically, you know, how you can bring that diversity and to the, to the fire and the police department, because, you know, we want to have people that they look like us, you know, and we want to build that trust with those communities, specifically with the African-American and the Latino community in Fitchburg, you know? So that one is something that I would really care that you, you know, that you pursue this, you know, how we can bring the best qualified candidates to the departments, but also bring people that represent the population that we are, you know? As you know, Fitchburg, thirty-three percent of the people, the people here in Fitchburg, we, they are, you know, considered people of color. We don't see too much in our district, you know what I mean? But if we go outside, you know, District Three and District One, we can see that the big communities, African-American and Latino, living in Fitchburg. And this is something that I also have this conversation with the two chiefs, how we can bring that diversity in our forces. So can you, can you tell me something about, because I assume that we don't, your experience as a labor attorney, you have, have you considered, what are your, you know, what do you think about pursuing this?
Sure. So, couple thoughts. One, I work with unions regularly, appreciate and respect the unions and the individuals I work with in those unions, and I hope they would say the same about my advocacy. You said you want the most qualified individuals to represent the city of Fitchburg for police and fire, and that is also my goal, and that would be my goal in the hiring process within the city, recognizing the value of having individuals of color on the police force and in the fire department as well. So I'd love to work with the chief and the commission to the extent that that's something that's appropriate, to make sure that it is representative of the community we live in.
Okay.
All right, I have Tom next, and then Joe after that.
Thanks, Tom. So if I get this right, and just for the public watching, you do live in District Two, and your representatives are Julia and Gabriel, correct?
Correct.
Those are your two representatives? Okay. Do you have any problem at all with the meeting dates and making the meetings as posted?
I don't. So they're, I believe, third Wednesdays, I relatively recently moved them. I've been to a couple, I've had the chance to do so, and won't be a problem. And I do think making meetings is an important component of being a member of a committee of a commission, and I know there have been struggles with that, and I can commit to making the meetings.
And correct me if, now, the mayor knows too, I know, but just for other Alders that may be wondering, or as I'm concerned, you know, you make the appointment, but after you make the appointment, this is really, I use my own term, the Police and Fire Commission's a sacred body. I don't care if you're elected or not. They hire, they fire, they discipline. And it's kind of a standoff committee on purpose due to the fact that maybe it was state law, but anyhow, that's the way the city of Fitchburg's always been. And it's elected officials, we don't get involved. After you make the appointment, you don't get involved. Going to Julia's statement, if you know someone, though, you'd like to have them apply in Fitchburg, tell them. Have you heard me say that before? I don't care who they are. If you know somebody and you want, you think they'd be a good candidate for the city. When I was on the first, when I was on the force, I had the first woman police officer in the city. Then I had the first black police officer in the city. And now it's changed altogether. But if you know someone, tell them to apply.
All right, I have Joe next. Go ahead, Joe.
I want to make a couple of clarifications. So I guess the first regarding district, and these are more comments than questions, regarding district representation, I think, I just want to reiterate the importance of it, to state that, not that your skill set is not valuable if you live outside of a certain district, but to reiterate that, you know, residency in districts is more about the committee as a whole, in my mind, and keep in mind, I'm a new Alder, so I'm learning the processes myself. But given what I know about the duties and the functions of the Police and Fire Commission, I stated that representation, not as a matter of discounting skill sets that members have, but to say that within that balance, I value the importance of having different parts of the city represented. To the second piece about, you know, a social justice lens, I also want to just, you know, it's a little wording piece, but I just wanted to clarify, I never at any point said "social justice warrior." I think that's often a derogatory or pejorative term that's, that tends to be, not to say that you used it in that fashion, but it's often a term that's used in that way. So I just want to clarify that I've never used that specific statement. I do think it is, however important, that to acknowledge the fact that we live in Dane County. Dane County has one of the highest disparities in arrests, in sentencing, with people of color. I took my first foray into looking at this when I sat on the Dane County Implementation Team on Racial Disparities in the Criminal Justice System. I've spoken at length with police chiefs of various departments, my current role at United Way, where I work on a committee that actually examines juveniles involved in the justice system. And I've heard this directly from the mouths of high-ranking police officials in various departments, including Chief Brecklin, that it's critically important to understand those disparities when we're looking at who we're hiring and when we're looking at disciplinary actions. The youth that you outlined in your video, I know them, I know their friends, I know people that work closely with them. So, you know, I just want to reiterate the importance of saying that, you know, we can't look at these types of decisions with a color-blind lens, because these disparities exist, and they exist for specific reasons, and they've existed for a long time. While it is important to ensure that our communities are safe, it's also important to acknowledge that different communities are affected in different ways than others. And again, this isn't a question to you, but this is more of a statement to the council and to the public that's watching this, that it's critically important that when we're looking at the commission that makes those decisions, that we do have representation from at least somebody on the commission that understands that. I'll leave it at that, but I just wanted to make sure that that went on the record.
All right. I don't see anyone else. Oh, Dorothy, go ahead.
I come from a real different perspective than other people. I am about to begin my fifth term on the county board, my fourth term on public protection and judiciary. On PP&amp;J, people like the sheriff, the DA, judges, 911, center emergency management folks, all report to my committee. So I get to hear from all those people what's going on in the community and the efforts that the county is making toward trying to relieve some of the pressures that Joe speaks of and is incredibly familiar with. Kind of side note, you'd said, you've mentioned Thurston a lot. I live on the corner of Apache and Thurston. My house is right on that corner, so I'm incredibly familiar with that area. I get to watch it out, my security cameras on my porch all the time. Question for you is what do you know of the activities of the Dane County Criminal Justice Councils, the CJC, and what kind of support would you see yourself as a person and as a representative of the city on Police and Fire Commission? What kind of support would you give toward the efforts they make?
Honestly, I don't know. I'm not familiar with that. I assume a county commission?
That is a, it's not a county commission. It is comprised of most of the people that I mentioned. They, they, they work together. I think they have noon hour meetings.
A collaborative group working with law enforcement policy, it sounds like, and justice policy.
And try, trying to help sort out the problems that we have throughout Dane County with crime, and trying to come up with the best, most reasonable solutions that work as much as can be managed for everyone.
Right. I, that's not a role of the PFC, from what I understand, but I would, I think that's great that we have a group that's looking into those types of issues, and I hope they have that diversity of thought and diversity of opinion.
I'd be happy to hook you in.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, ready to vote? All right, all right.
One thing I want to say for the future, if, if Tom is confirmed, I would like the group to talk about the next person that gets brought on to be someone with that, the CJC kind of perspective, rather than the...
All right, we got, we got to stay on track. It's over an hour into the meeting. All right, but we can talk about that, is, I don't know who's up for next here. All right, roll call, please.
Can you hear me?
Hi, ma'am.
Okay, now we can hear you. Oh, nope. Now you're muted. Nope, we still, Julia, you got to go again. We didn't hear you.
Voting?
Now?
Now we can hear you. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so what, so what are you doing?
Uh, we're voting on yes. You want to confirm, Tom, or no, you do not?
Okay, uh, yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yeah.
Alder Maldonado?
No.
Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Seven to one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tom. All right, moving along. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
In a second?
Second.
All right, second. Anything that, anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda? See and none? All in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Before we get to Administrator's Report, I would like someone to please amend the agenda to move up 12A6. It's the last thing on here. Valerie wants to just be a part of this or be available to answer questions on this piece. So if someone could make that motion, that'd be great.
Which one? Can you repeat?
The very last one. It's the support of, yeah, 9620, support of the amicus brief.
I move to move up Resolution R 9620 for discussion.
I don't know what happened.
Is there a second? Hold on. Is there a second? All right, second about Tom. All right. So this is, it was the last thing on the agenda, and it's something that, you know, I think Pat had emailed you that we had to add last second. And I can just give you a quick overview, but then Valerie knows more than I do because she talked to the lawyer from Madison. But Mayor Satya Rose Conway in Madison had sent me an email. I think it was late Thursday or Friday morning. He's telling me, no, that they're filing an amicus brief supporting, essentially, there's a lawsuit going to the Supreme Court, and it's saying that, you know, we don't like to stay at home order, we don't think the governor, the governor should have that authority. And we're just saying, this brief is supporting that, no, it really makes sense for times like right now with COVID for the governor to make kind of the rules for the entire state to follow. Because if he doesn't have that power, then Pittsburgh can make their rules on how they're going to stay at home, and Verona can do something else, Middleton can do something else, and you have this patchwork where, you know, you can go to our parks but not Verona's, or you can go to our restaurants and not Middleton's, and so there could be a lot of confusion that way. Valerie, why don't you go ahead and explain it probably better than I did?
Yes, absolutely. So, and if you just follow along on the resolution, I kind of outlined the timeline. But essentially, what we have is Governor Evers issued a public health emergency on March 12th. He issued the first emergent, emergency stay-at-home order, which was Order 12, on March 24th. And then on April 16th, a second emergency order, well, I'm sorry, the order number 28, but a second safer-at-home order was issued. And that is the order that is currently being challenged by the legislature in the Wisconsin Supreme Court. The, so the Wisconsin Supreme Court is going to be deciding whether the governor has the proper authority and is exercising it properly in terms of issuing that safer-at-home order. The city of Pittsburgh is not a party to this lawsuit in any way, and no one is asking us to get involved in that lawsuit as a party. But there is in, in, in law such an idea that an, um, an amicus brief, which is essentially saying that even though the city of Pittsburgh is not a party, the city of Madison is not a party, even though the Wisconsin Association of Local Health Departments and Boards, who's leading the charge on this, is not a party, because we're all affected by this, we also would like to be heard. And so the city of Madison has reached out to, as Mary Richardson mentioned, reached out to a number of municipalities through the legal Wisconsin municipalities, as well as the mayor network, and has asked whether any other municipalities, counties, or other municipal agencies would like to sign on to this brief. And so the resolution is before you. Essentially, what they're asking is would you like to add Pittsburgh's name to this brief? It's obviously 100% a policy decision for you as a governing body, so we're not here asking you to do something one way or the other. It's up to you to vote to decide if you'd like to add Pittsburgh to the list of municipalities who are making this request. Essentially, the idea, as the city assistant city attorney that I spoke with in Madison, is the idea of a smoking section in a restaurant, that's one big room, or, as she had mentioned, a peeing section in a pool. The problem is that if there isn't a statewide stay-at-home order, then municipalities and counties can have a varying degree of various other orders. And so, for instance, Rock County might be completely open, Dane County might be somewhere halfway between open and closed, Milwaukee County might be entirely, you know, on lockdown, et cetera. And so that presents a challenge for local public health departments to protect the community and to the members, since obviously we're, we all live in the same pool or restaurant room, or however you want to look at it. So that's, that's their promise. They're asking us, would we like to sign our name? There's no cost to the city in terms of signing this brief. It's literally just adding our name and saying, yes, we're in support of this idea that this should be handled statewide, rather than county by county or municipality by municipality, which is what we'll be left with if the statewide orders overturn.
And I think another example would be before there was a statewide smoking ban, individual cities were banning it, or I think maybe some counties. And so you had some places where it was allowed, some where it wasn't, and it was confusing. And then eventually, there just was a statewide smoking ban, which I think was a lot better for everyone involved. Questions, comments at all, Dorothy?
Yeah, Valerie, is within whatever, whoever is trying to do, presuming that we say that the governor should have the overriding, is there still the ability for municipalities to have some degree of decision-making about what happens in their own area? Or is it completely dominated by what the governor says?
I think the idea that currently, for instance, Pittsburgh doesn't have its own public health department, and so we're under the authority of the Dane County Public Health Department, the Madison Dane County Public Health Department. And so if the governor's order went away, the local public health department would still have authority. There's sort of parallel authority, and right now, for the most part, things are running under the statewide order. But if that statewide, statewide order goes away, then we'll be left with Dane County Public Health, Madison order, or orders, whatever those may be.
But even with the governors, do we have, or does Dane County have some degree of independence in decision-making, even if the governor is in charge of the, the whole?
I, I think they have powers as well. They're under a separate chapter.
Okay, because I know different counties and even different, different parts of the city of Pittsburgh can be treated differently. So I, I just want to be sure that it's possible for thing, for local decision-making to be in place also.
Yeah, it's not changing what the state dictates and what the city can dictate or anything like that. It's just, yeah. Gabrielle?
I'm really happy that we're taking, making a motion to sign onto this brief. I think it's fantastic. I really think the city's done a lot of great work, taking action on COVID-19 to protect the citizens of Pittsburgh. And I'm excited that we're doing this, and I'm, and, and in support of it for sure.
All right, Tom?
Pat? Is there any cost to this?
No, there's no cost. It's just a signature saying we're in support of the resolution that's written.
I didn't, I was busy and I didn't get to actually reading it. But question for you in reference to like, I'm using the bigger cities now, Sun Prairie, Middleton. Are they on board? Or there, who else is on board? Other, do you know?
All I know right now is Madison. I'm sure, I'm sure the other communities will be considering it as you are tonight.
Yeah, my understanding is there's a number of communities, as well as counties. And I apologize, I don't have an extensive list, in part because this is all happening very quickly, and the brief has to be filed tomorrow. But it's not just municipalities, it's also the Wisconsin Association of Local Health Departments and Boards, which is the professional association for public health departments across the state. I believe the city of Milwaukee and Milwaukee County is also on board. And I know there's a number of other municipalities all over the state that have agreed to sign on to this. And I apologize, I don't have the exhaustive list, as we're not really the coordinating agency.
Julia?
Yeah, so I, I really want to understand what we're doing here, because if we are following this, you know, the state is, already has a mandate, okay? So why do we need to do this as a local municipality? Because we are following the state, you know what I mean? So I want to understand, you know, why it's so needed to do this if we, you know, we follow state law, okay? So that one. Second, if we are going to do something like this and approve this, I would like to, I am pretty concerned as a ci, as a city that we need to maybe to, I don't know if this is for this conversation or for other conversation, but we need to ask our resident when they go out to use a mask. The weather is, is getting better, and I have seen last weekend, a lot of people outside. They are not doing social distancing, they are not wearing masks. So, you know, if we are going to do something like this, we are going to approve this, and seeing as a city, we should go and have a, another message for our residents that if they're going to be out, they have to take more precautions, okay?
Yeah, Julia, this isn't saying that we agree or disagree with safer-at-home. This is just saying that we agree the governor has the authority to create those safer-at-home things. It's not the city of Pittsburgh saying we agree with the restrictions the governor did, that we should do anything more out, different with COVID. The, let, the, I think it's the legislature is kind of suing, saying that the governor shouldn't have that authority to make these statewide pronounce, regulations. And we're saying, no, it does make sense for the governor to do it. It's, it's about COVID right now, but we're not really saying, yes, we like safer-at-home, or we don't like safer-at-home. It's really saying that, yeah, the governor has the authority to make these big pronouncements, whether it's COVID or anything else in the future, that type of thing.
So?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so if that one isn't perfect, what is that what, you know, we are a 30,000 small municipality. What are our push, you know, that, you know, we are agree with the, you know, what the, the government is doing is, he has the authority to do it. You know what I mean? I don't understand what, to be honest, I don't understand what is all about this, you know? I want to understand what we're doing here, you know, so.
I guess I'm, yeah, I, I can try and explain a different way.
I am confused, so, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to try and think of a different way to explain it, I guess. Right now, that, so the lawsuit that is the law, the legislature versus the governor, because they're not, they're unhappy with the safer-at-home. And so they're really saying, no, the governor shouldn't have this authority to make these safer-at-home pronunciation, pronouncements for the entire state. And Madison is wanting to weigh in, even though we're not part of the lawsuit, just weigh in because it impacts Madison and other municipalities like us, is that, you know, hey, yeah, it does make sense because we don't think that every municipality or county should be making their own decisions on these big health issues that affect the entire state. And so with these big things that impact the entire state, the governor really is the one that should be saying, here's kind of our guidelines and rules. And we're just signing on, saying, yeah, we agree with that as well, adding our name to this, this brief that they're filing in, in this case, that really doesn't have anything to do with us, but it would impact us. And that's why we're putting our name on it, because if they decide that, no, the cities can do whatever they want, that impacts us versus, they know the governor is doing exactly what he should be doing. Valerie, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I, I think that's right, Erin. And I guess what I would just, again, if I can reiterate this. The idea is that right now, there's sort of parallel authority. Some of it's coming from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, which is a statewide agency, and that's where these safer-at-home orders are coming from. I mean, they're coming, the, the governor's directing the Secretary of Department of Health Services to issue these orders. If the Wisconsin Supreme Court strikes down that authority for statewide order, what will be left is a county-by-county patchwork. And so, for example, Dane, or city by city, depending on, some cities have their own public health agencies, and some have municipal, like county-wide ones. And so, for example, if you live in Pittsburgh and you're a part of Dane County, Dane County may very well choose to continue to have their own version of a safer-at-home order. You could drive down to, say, New Glarus, which is in Green County, and they may have entirely different restrictions or no restrictions at all. And so the concern, I think, for municipalities and for public health agencies is that this kind of patchwork would essentially negate the effectiveness of the counties and municipalities that do have those orders, right? So you might, we might be in a restricted setting, and then you can drive, you know, 15 minutes away and go to a restaurant, go to a wall game, go to a big party, get sick, and bring that infection home to Dane County, to the city of Pittsburgh. So if we sign our name to it, we're essentially saying, yes, we agree. Please, Wisconsin Supreme Court, don't take this authority away from the Department of Health Services and allow them to continue to issue statewide orders, rather than leaving us with a patchwork.
Julia, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
So my final question is, what happened if we signed this, and then the Supreme Court strikes down, you know, and they say, you know, we don't care what the governor say, you know, so where is future coming back? We are going to have our own, we are going to follow the, you know, what, what happened there? I want to understand.
We would be under the public health, Madison Dane County. So whatever.
Okay.
The city of Pittsburgh doesn't have a public health agency of its own.
So then can we be liable to legal sue if we have a company here, say, Pittsburgh say we are going to continue with this, but some companies say, you know, the Supreme Court has tried down that, so we, we don't care what you, Pittsburgh say? Can we have a legal, legal issue?
No, this is just an amicus brief. This is basically...
No, I understand that part. I am asking hypothetically, what happened if we, you know what I mean? You don't understand what I am asking? If we, if the Supreme Court strikes down this, okay, so Pittsburgh is going to follow the, the, the health department, you know, issue. But then what happened if we have company or restaurant here in Pittsburgh that they say, you know what, we are not going to follow that? You know, we are going to open, you know, because the Supreme Court has struck down that. What is our position? What is our legal power there, you know what I mean, that we have?
Well, this, I, I'm not really prepared to give you an extensive legal opinion on that, because that's, it's really pretty hypothetical at this point. But I think what you're suggesting is that if the Supreme Court strikes down the statewide authority for this order, it doesn't get rid of the local county departments. It's like I said, it's a parallel track, it's in a different chapter of the statutes. I don't think, and, and again, because we're not a party, I don't, I haven't looked at all of the briefings. In fact, I wasn't even really very involved in this until about Friday afternoon, when I learned of this brief, and we were asked if we were interested in joining. But as I understand it, there's really no discussion right now about the state, I'm sorry, about the county local health department's authority to issue rules under the other chapter. This lawsuit has to do specifically with the governor's authority to direct the Department of Health Services. So I don't think it affects that authority at all. But regardless, we, we really aren't the ones, as the city of Pittsburgh, with any authority to issue those types of orders, because we don't have a public health department. So any orders that we would be under would come from the county. So I don't think that, in that sense, I don't think we'd be exposed to liability either way. Our involvement really is, if, you know, the public health department, if the businesses in Pittsburgh and the public health department contacts us, they may ask the police department to go and, and request voluntary assistance, or voluntary compliance, rather, I apologize.
All right, I have Dorothy next.
Okay, so in following this in the news a little bit, what I've been seeing is that it comes down to a control issue between the legislature and the governor, where the legislature wants to make the decisions and take the decision-making authority away from the governor. Is that about what you see, Valerie?
That's, that's what I've read as well, and, and by that I mean in the news, not in the briefs.
Correct. Correct.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing nothing else, then we can do a vote. All in favor of supporting our ninety-six twenty, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. I heard one nay, but still approved.
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, moving along, uh, to administrative report, Pat.
Thank you, Valerie.
Yeah, thanks, Valerie. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few things, uh, to report. Uh, I, I'd like to first report that all of our, um, staff to date is, uh, healthy and, and COVID free. So that's very important. Families also, which is just as important, uh, right up there. Uh, staff has done an outstanding job, uh, working through this difficult situation from remote locations, from coming into the office, uh, not only during work hours, but above and beyond work hours, uh, to get the, the task at hand done. So I'd like to thank all the staff, uh, for really making, um, uh, you know, getting through this situation without, uh, being deterred, really. So, uh, congratulations to them. Um, I would also like to, uh, you know, let you know that when you're driving through Fitchburg, it's business as usual out there. You see a lot of construction, you see a lot of activity. We haven't slowed down from a development perspective. Uh, Fish Hatchery Road is well underway, uh, to construction. McKee Road, both the state project and the city project are moving along nicely. We have several private sector projects that are moving along and looks as though this is going to continue. Uh, this isn't the case in other municipalities throughout the state. Uh, we should feel, uh, privileged to be in the situation we're in economically, that, um, our community, our, uh, businesses, our, our, our restaurants are seeing this activity. So hats off to, uh, everybody that's made Fitchburg what it is today. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Julia, question?
I have a question for Patrick, um, two question. One is, um, is, uh, what is the statute for the Madison Metro bill that we received? And the other one, what is the, uh, if you, there is any update of town of Madison, um, you know, preparation?
Um, first of all, the, the, uh, Madison transit situation, the invoice, the city has not paid that invoice to date. Um, we are working on, uh, uh, determining which routes can be shortened moving forward this year so that we can, uh, pay an invoice that was budgeted through the budget process. We would pay an invoice equal to that dollar amount and not more. Uh, the city is also looking at other options when it comes to transit and will be presenting those options to various committees and the council moving forward. Uh, so that's where we're at with transit. Ultimately, the council will have the decision as to what happens with, uh, uh, with our bus service, uh, in the community. When it comes to the town of Madison, uh, a meeting with the city of Madison is a partnership on this on a regular basis. Given the time we're in, we've, uh, been delayed somewhat, but we have a meeting coming up the first week of June. Uh, that, that's a, that's a partnership meeting where several staff members from both the city of Madison and the city of Fitchburg are working together uh, to come up with the best recommendations to our individual councils as to how to proceed with the annexation of the town and, and dates according to best practices. So we'll keep you up to date on that. I know as council president, you're looking for a committee of the whole, uh, agenda items. We definitely want to put that on a committee of the whole moving forward.
All right, moving along to plant commission. Tom, do you want to do a motion?
Right, for the other council members, I'll just give you a quick heads up. Uh, what I do from the plan, plan side is I read these and I move them as I, I'm gonna read it, then I move it. I give a few notes on what I remember and then the mayor pipes in too, to help me out if I forgot something. But, um, just to get you up to date on what's going on, that's how it's kind of been done here. So here we go. The first one is resolution, it's our ninety-one twenty. It's, it's CS twenty-three forty-five dash twenty. Resolution approving certified survey map CS twenty-three forty-five dash twenty by Jason. Geiger agent for AW Bosch LLC to divide property associated with this address. Fifty-six thirty-three Lacy Road into four lots and I'll move the plant commission, uh, I'll move it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, signed in and plant commission did approve. Do you want to speak to this?
Right, the first, the, the comments I have on this one is, um, what happened here is, uh, Mr. Bach was a veteran and he had passed away and he is selling his house there on the corner of No Oak and Lacy Road. And the individual that's looking at purchasing it, they're dividing it into four lots. And there was fourteen conditions associated with this. And if you know the area a little bit, No Oak, the sidewalk stops halfway down the street and the plant commission looked at it, we want the sidewalk to continue onto Lacy Road, up to Lacy Road. But then when you get to Lacy Road, the sidewalk came into play and the plant commission, we decided to forego the sidewalk on Lacy Road. From this property to the west, if you look at it, there's like seven or eight homes there. There's no sidewalk. A quick history is they never had a sidewalk there. If you go west of Richardson, there's a sidewalk. And I live in that subdivision and people were adamant about the sidewalk going there because of the school. They want to be able to walk the kids up to the school. And, um, so I think we did decide that in the future, who knows will be sitting these seats or the mayor will be, but if there's a sidewalk in this area going west, it would be in a deed that all of those would have to have sidewalks. And right now it's quite expensive for people with sidewalks and there's nothing there, if you know where I'm talking about. The, on that side of the street, if you're west on Lacy Road, on the south side, there isn't a sidewalk. And with that being said, there was, um, fourteen conditions that have to be associated with this and what did I miss, Mayor?
Uh, really, I guess to me, the main thing is that the house is on a one point eight acre lot right now and they're dividing it into four lots. So they're, you know, just under a half acre lot each. The house is still gonna stay there at this point anyway. And so it's really just taking this big lot that, that was, been there for probably fifty years and dividing it into four lots. That's really the key thing for me. So, any questions at all? Dorothy?
I wanted to just do a little bit of a public thank you to, um, Jason, he entertained my questions about the possibility of, um, asking for not only single family, but the possibility of having two family homes on those lots. The smallest of the lots is like, um, one point three eight acres. Um, certainly big enough to end up having a duplex house on there. And it would have been possible, um, but he felt as though the neighborhood as a whole would come down on him and say, no way in hell, which kind of sucks, um, when we're talking about trying to make it affordable for people to buy a house in Fitchburg. So he, he would have considered it but for the reaction that he expected from the neighbors. So I wanted to thank him for at least entertaining the idea.
All right, anything else? So, here Randy, go ahead.
The, the final outcome then, is it, is it going to be listed in the deed then going forward? If a sidewalk is required on the south side of Lacy to continue west, that, that new property owner has, has the understanding that they have to comply?
That's what we've asked for. Actually, the plant commission doesn't have the authority to do that. Public Works does, but that's what plant commission is asked.
Okay, very good.
For that, yeah, at the time of development or in the future when that sidewalk is going to go through, would those people be responsible in the future?
Okay, good.
All right, seeing nothing else, we can go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. Next one, Tom.
Next one's resolution, it's our ninety-two dash twenty, CS twenty-three forty-six dash twenty. Resolution approving certified survey request, it's a CS twenty-three forty-six dash twenty by Chris Ruten, an agent for Thermal Electron. It's a scientific instrument LLC to divide property associated with fifty-two oh five. It's Verona Road, lot one through three, CSM thirty-one twenty-two. Uh, they're going to put it to two lots. I'll move the plant commission approval.
All right, sign in and plant mission approved. Do you want to speak to it or do you want me to?
This one, um, actually I have seven conditions. And Mayor, I think we, no, there were like ten conditions, but.
All the conditions are generally pretty standard conditions. It's essentially that Thermal Fisher has a bunch of properties and they're just gonna divide off a piece of it so they can sell it. I don't know if they have someone already to sign up, sign up or not, but there's just cutting off a piece of their big lot so they can sell it to someone else. Questions at all? Uh, all right, Julia.
So, um, so how big is this lot?
It's pretty big. There's a building on it.
So, um, is there a split, um, they are gonna, this, it's gonna maintain the zoning? Because the zoning is, um, is industrial?
Yep.
Yeah, so they're gonna keep that zoning?
They are.
Okay.
All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. Next one, Tom.
The next one is, I meant it, I lost place, it's three, right?
Yep, number three.
Resolution our ninety-three dash twenty, FFPA is twenty-three forty-four dash twenty. A resolution approving final plat amendment request, FPA twenty-three forty-four dash twenty by Chad Ruben, agent for Plactics. It's Place Townhouse LLC for final plat of Plaxton Place Lot, uh, seventy-six dash eighty-three in Terra. And I'll move the planet, I'll move plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. Plant commission did approve and this is.
I believe this was dividing into eight lots.
Well, it's, we're just doing a slate, so the lots were for these townhomes, they're like zero lot line. Townhomes essentially are houses and they're changing those lot sizes by actually a very small amount. And it's like point oh five acres or something like that. It's making the two end ones just slightly bigger and the other one slightly smaller. But it, it's really exactly what was there before, same number of townhomes and everything like that. Any questions? Julia?
Do you know if these townhouses are gonna be, um, uh, home ownership occupied or they're gonna be renters?
They're gonna be homeowners, homeownership.
Okay.
All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Next one, Tom.
I have two left. Uh, this ordinance twenty, twenty twenty dash zero dash fourteen, RZ twenty-three forty-one dash twenty. Zoning ordinance amendment granting specific implementation plan zoning for property associated with fifty-three ninety-five East Cheryl Parkway, uh, plan approved.
Is there, so you, second by Randy and this one you must, Tom, you want to speak to this one?
You could have, but this is, um, I, I believe this is associated with, um, adding eleven parking stalls?
To hospice care.
To hospice, and I believe all of you know where that is. They're just adding some more stalls. They had the, um, past councils gave them permission to do it at a later date and that's what they're doing now.
Yeah, it's part of, with the new extension on Thahe Feels between Lacy Road and East Cheryl. They're gonna have an access point to their drive, to their parking off of that road, which will be great when there's events on East Cheryl. And as part of that, they are adding, like Tom said, like eleven more parking spots. And their original, when they first developed a long time ago, they had a very specific number of parking spots for some reason on there. So they just need approval to go a little bit above that. If you've been on East Cheryl, you know that there's a big demand for parking and a lot of people are parking on the street. Any questions at all? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that one's approved. Last one, Tom.
And the next one, the last one's ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash fifteen. It's RZ twenty-three forty-three twenty. Uh, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezon request, RZ twenty-three forty-three dash twenty by Dale Sticka, agent for World, um, Worldwide World LLC to rezon property associated with twenty-eight twenty-three Index Road. This is a portion of lot two, Maple Lawn Heights, commercial plot from Business Highway to Business General to Alive Law Four and Educational Service Use. Plant commission, I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. All right.
Yeah, most of you have heard about this. This is a school associated with the Index Road property off, off Greenway Cross to the east, off of Fish Hatchery Road. It has to do kind of getting their ball rolling.
Yeah, it's a charter school, kind of working through the university and just trying to reach out to, I believe it's, uh, disadvantaged kids. It's independent public charter school. Uh, they're hoping to get grade seven through twelve up there. Questions at all? Julia?
Uh, yes, I was able to, to watch the discussion in plant commission about this. Um, one of my concerns is that, uh, about, um, you know, if you see in the staff memo, they talk about how many students per year. Uh, my concern is how we are gonna deal with parking there. You know, they're gonna be additional parking, they are gonna build additional parking. What happened if most of the student, they said that, um, eventually with, um, with the school is full, um, you know, with all the grades, there will be no more than two hundred students. So, um, and my question is, have, I didn't see a good discussion in plant commission about the parking. I don't know, Tom and Aaron, how they're gonna address the parking when the school start running and, you know, you know, so where the student are gonna be able to park?
Yeah, we talked about it briefly and realized that that is gonna be a challenge for them in that area. Uh, something that, there is some parking there. The Dale Sticka owns a bunch of properties in the area and so he will allow, I think, through, because I think during the day, he doesn't have as much going on in those other properties. And so there's other parking that he owns, people can use. It is something that they, it might be a long-term issue that they'll have to come up with a better solution. Um, I know that they're hoping to get like forty, fifty kids this first year, but it is something that I think they'll probably end up having to address long-term. But I think they're also hoping, and one of the reasons they like this location is because it's close to public transportation. Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, they also do, uh, I was gonna mention that, the, the bus, we have the bus stop right there. Um, we also, um, allow on-street parking in that locations. That would take care of not the two hundred cars that, uh, Aldo Radifrada noted, but, um, it would take care of, uh, a, a significant amount.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, go ahead, Julia.
I want to clarify that I am reading this for the staff memo and here it says year four, it could be between one hundred fifteen, two hundred students. So, you know, you know, it's more, I suppose that a hundred that drive cars, you know, so. And I can see the, the picture here and I am looking, you know, that the parking space is not, it's not big enough to accommodate that amount of cars. So I am asking this question to determine if we, you know, we discuss that and what, you know, they are planning in the future to, you know, to, to have. you know, to, to have all the option to accommodate all the parking. That's it.
Yep, and I think long-term, they're not sure if that this is, this is gonna be the permanent place either. They might by that time decide that they need a different location or like do, maybe more space. And so they're, you know, by year four, if it's, if it's successful, if they want it to be, they either will have a more permanent place or, you know, they'll be looking for a more permanent place possibly as well. Any other questions? All right, seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. Thank you, Tom. Uh, Sarah, do these. I don't think you're at this meeting, but since you are up, you get to make the motions anyway. I'll help you with the discussion and what it's about.
Yeah, all right. Let me scroll up to the agenda here. All right, so I'd make a motion to approve resolution R sixty-six twenty approving the fourth amendment, or, not amendment to agreement for subdivision improvements in the plot of Nine Springs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I know plan commission approved and the public works, I believe, did as well. Pat, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, and, uh, I'll be taking care of the, uh, public work stuff. Mike gave me his notes, uh, so no, so don't worry here. This is an extension of the time to complete the, uh, trail behind Phoenix Neutron. To September fifteenth of this year, this will coincide with the construction of other trails in the area. And this was, uh, originally delayed due to, uh, wetland impact and approval by the DNR and the Corps of Engineers.
So it's really just saying, they gotta do other paths. We realize it's a lot cheaper and easier for you to do them all at once and so we'll give you a little extra time.
Right, and it will be done by, you know, fall of this year.
Okay, great. Any questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one, Sarah.
All right, make a motion to approve resolution R seventy-four twenty approving a temporary easement for access and construction during the Burnwood, Burn Pond retrofit project.
Second.
All right, plan commission approved and so did public works. Pat, what's this one about?
This easement provides, uh, direct route to the pond and protects the park from additional disruption. It also enables the use of the existing road, saving the cost to build an access road. The easement also allows access around the pond during construction. The easement has been provided to the city at no cost. Our only expense will be drafting this agreement.
All right, questions on this one at all? I know stormwater is a big issue throughout the city and it's helping in this area anyway. Yeah, Gabrielle.
It's very generous for the, for the property owners to let them use it and not let the city have this any cost for the city. That's fantastic. So thank you to those two property owners. That's fantastic. Thank you.
And I would also note too that the city received grant money for this too, so, uh, this didn't come out of the general fund at all. So all this improvement here was due to, uh, county and state grants.
All right, seeing no other questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one, Sarah.
Uh, make a motion to approve resolution R seventy-six twenty banning contractors from using the Fitchburg recycling drop-off site.
Is there a second? Saying by Randy. Uh, Pat, go ahead.
Okay, uh, we've had a growing problem with contractors using this site. We do not have a, have the space for the large volume. There's being dropped off by those contractors. It's, uh, highly likely that a lot of the waste that's being dumped at our site isn't even from Fitchburg. So, um, our, our staff and public works is recommending that we ban contractors from this site. There's other areas they can go in the county.
I know public works approved this. RCC did not have a meeting to discuss this. Um, but it was something because we've been, with the construction season and, and spring here, we're seeing this happening and so we wanted to kinda get this finalized. Actually, we already have signs up for this as of right now, but wanted to get the council to approve it just to kinda cross all the Ts and dot all the Is because of the impact and, and, cause it's very costly when these contractors come and dump all their stuff on us.
Yep.
Joe, I have a question for you.
Yes, is, um, are there gonna be any means to, to sort of enforce that if, if we ban it? Like, is it just a sign or is it, you know, if you do this, then there will be this type of fine or?
Yeah, there will be a fine, uh, there will be a fine. There are cameras, uh, down there at that location, so, and they are monitored. We also have the same situation for, uh, people that are using the site that are from out of town. So residential users even also.
Randy, do you have a question?
Uh...
And Julia after that?
Yes, I mean, the, the monitoring, is it just by camera alone?
Well, uh, camera and staff is on-site during the day too. But a lot of the, a lot of the dumping, uh, this type of dumping occurs at night or, and or weekends.
Okay, all right. I, I, I mean, I've, I've witnessed it during the day. I mean, I live in Seven O'Four, so lots of leaves, too many leaves, but that's where I choose to live, great place. But all in, my own truckloads over, I see huge trailers pull and you know they're contractors from somewhere. So I, I'm pleased to see that the city is taking some type of action because it must be very costly for the city.
Yes, yeah, very costly.
Yeah, all right.
Julia?
Who me?
Yep.
Oh, so how we are gonna deal with the unmarked cars, you know, because I, you know, I go to the recycle a lot on weekends. Um, and I can see there are some trucks, you know what I mean? How do we know if they are, you know, Fitchburg resident, you know what I mean? So, or how do we know they are contractor, you know, if they come, you know what I mean? So, because some of them we can see they are like a business name on the, you know, uh, on the doors. But how do we're gonna enforce, you know, they are unmarked cars? And the other thing is, have we ever considered to have, to allow this contractor to, if they pay, uh, you know, a season fee to drop the stuff in our, you know, in the, in the recycle, you know what I mean? So, I don't know.
I, I guess...
My question is, how will we know if they are from out of town or, you know, they don't have a marked car, you know what I mean? So...
If they're suspected to be offenders, uh, their license plates would tell where they're from and who the car is registered to or the truck. Um, so if somebody came in, um, with a large trailer, as Alder Udell, uh, just stated, um, that'd be something that we would look at and find out where they were coming from.
So my question is, how do you do the? I am curious, okay? I'm asking this question because I want to know, so there is a time where you have a staff people that go through the camera and you start checking? How do you do it?
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a large amount of, uh, yard waste or any other type of debris, um, at the location on one day, they'll go back and look at the film to see who dumped that. Now, they won't monitor it on a daily basis, but if somebody's obviously violating, uh, the ordinance, they'll, they'll take a look at it.
And we don't have anyone that can sit there to charge a contractor. The reason they're coming dumping it with us is because we're not charging right now and we're not, we didn't have any regulation against it. And so that's where, there are places you can pay it to do it, they just don't wanna pay for it.
That's correct.
And we just don't have the staff to staff that either.
Yep.
Uh, go ahead, Sarah.
Um, although RCC couldn't meet to discuss this, it has been a topic that we've talked about in the past, just as a known concern. And so I think that we've talked through kind of that there are some obstacles to get through to enforce it. But without a doubt, it's been talked about as a challenge and I think honestly, any type of effort to ease the dumping there would be appreciated.
All right, thank you.
I wanna, can I mention something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the, the company that is doing my landscaping, they told me the other day, uh, we can leave everything here. We cannot drop the stuff in this Fitch, Fitchburg recycle anymore. So they know.
Good.
So they know. So they say, you know, we cannot do any, I know that we are doing that, but yeah, so...
All right. Sounds good. All right, seeing nothing else, so we can go to the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. One more, Sarah.
All right, make a motion to, uh, for resolution R eighty-twenty accepting twenty-twenty crack seal and repair program. Bid for maintenance of streets in the city of Pittsburgh.
Second.
All right, so you did. And did public works approve? They did. Did finance approve?
Yes.
All right, Pat, you want to speak to this one?
Yes, this is the annual crack filling program. Uh, bids included thirteen street segments as shown in the attached map. The bid came in higher than anticipated, so we requested a deductive change order as part of the contract award. The change order deducted fifteen thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars from the bid. The request award authorizes thirty-two thousand forty-six dollars plus a two thousand dollar contingency. The streets that were deducted from the, uh, bid request were Gunflint Drive, Fontana Court, and East Clayton Road. Um, and they were deducted because they were in the best shape of all the roads that were originally submitted.
I know this is critically important, just for maintenance of roads, to make sure that the longevity is there and we're protecting the investment that we, cause it's meant to cause a lot of money to pave roads and this helps make them last longer.
Yeah, the, this, um, this adds many years to our streets by doing this on a regular basis.
Tom?
Pat, do you know if, um, the residents have been notified in reference to this? This also creates one heck of a mess for homeowners, especially if they have white vinyl. And I've been down this road before and this crack sealing can be, I, I understand what it's for. I get the whole picture, but the residents should definitely know what's coming prior to arrival.
Yep, we will notify the residents, uh, along those roadways as to when, there'll probably be some sort of yard sign that puts, that's put up that road will work, will occur on these days. So...
Dorothy?
And that includes parking restrictions probably?
Uh, likely, because some of the cracks that are being sealed would be along areas where people would park.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved as well. Anything else, Sarah, for public works?
No, I look forward to the next meeting.
All right, uh, moving on, park commission, that's you again, Sarah.
Yes, so for parks, we didn't meet, but I have been having some conversations with Scott and Pat and Chief Brecklin just about some concerned, concerned residents about the, an increase in unleashed dogs. So, working with Scott, um, and Chief Brecklin to kind of educate residents of Fitchburg that we do have a leash ordinance and that, um, dogs should be with a leash as long as they're outside of the property of the owner. So just kind of working to educate and sharing the news that, uh, it's unfortunately just an unsafe practice. I know I personally witnessed a dog run out into the road and I, I don't, nothing happened to the dog, but just, I don't want anything to happen to people's pets and I don't want anything to happen to people that are walking by. So, just working to educate people on that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, library board, Randy, you have a report?
Uh, nothing to report. Haven't met.
All right, commission agent well, Dorothy?
Center is closed, has been for a time, but staff is still taking care of citizen needs as much as reasonably possible. Um, they're doing regular email updates and, um, back TV spots that people should check out. Um, Wednesday, the sixth, they're also doing, oh, camera over here, Fitchburg Senior Center Drive-by Parade. Where the senior center staff will be outside under the covered drive-up. At the senior center, they'll be passing out cloth masks and sharing a smile and a wave as citizens drive by them to give them a nice wave. So they, they'd be delighted to have people join the little car parade.
I know I'll be out there. I know that their residents miss them and they miss their residents because they can't see them every day like they used to.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Uh, resource conservation commission?
No report. We're working on scheduling our next meeting.
All right, great. Transportation and transit?
No update.
All right, uh, Julia, SIDA. Got a resolution here first.
Yes, uh, we met on April twenty-third. Um, we, um, we discussed a lot of things and one of the, um, one that we went through was the resolution for the housing, um, Dane County Housing Authority. So I moved approval of resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty declaring the need for the Dane County Housing Authority to function within the city of Fitchburg and authorizing the Dane County Housing Authority to operate within the city of Fitchburg.
All right, saying about Dorothy. And is that the amended version? I know the housing...
Yeah, this is the amended version, yes.
Perfect. All right, I know housing approved...
Resolution was approved in Housing Advisory Committee, Plan Commission, Finance, and SIDA.
All right, do you want to speak to this first or do you want me to? To what it's doing? Do you want to speak to what it's doing? Authorizing or do you want me to speak a little bit more about what it is?
Yeah, you can mention that.
Okay, yeah, so this is something that I've been working on for a year now, just after I was elected and something I think has been very important to have the Dane County Housing Authority operate here in Fitchburg. Uh, we're the only city in Dane County that has not authorized them to this point. And there's only one village in Dane County that has not authorized them. And it's a group that can come in and really help us improve the quality of our housing stock. When you have areas like North Fishatory Road, the kinda L.I. Drive area where you have some pretty old properties that are rental properties and some owners that haven't been investing very much in them, you know, especially recently. Uh, maybe those people are older, they wanna kinda cash out and sell and move on. Uh, Dane County Housing Authority could actually buy those properties and they have a lot of requirements on the quality of properties they have and they've got a lot of funding mechanisms they can also tap into. And so they can go in, put a bunch of money in here, so they're actually quality places that you would want to live. And they also do a great job of monitoring those properties as well. So we can really take some properties that are distressed, have some issues, and they can really help us kinda turn those around and make them, uh, a lot better quality, higher quality property as well. Something that, like I said, I've been pushing for a year now and I'm excited to hopefully have it approved tonight. Um, but I can take questions or comments or anything like that as well. Gabrielle?
I'm incredibly excited that this is coming forward. I think this is a fantastic thing for the city. I had a conversation with Rob, the executive director, last year and heard a lot more about what the, the DCHA does. And I think they can do a lot of good in the city and I'm very excited that this is coming forward and that I get a chance to, to vote for this, cause I, I enthusiastically support it. And I'm excited for what the future can bring with them.
Anyone else? Julia?
Uh, things that they also mentioned in our meeting, I don't know, Joe, you were a part of the meeting too, that they mentioned, um, some of the plans. And so we know that Fitchburg doesn't have any problem to, to attract developer to build new, uh, projects. But, uh, we are having issue to developers that they want to, you know, renovate old, um, dwellings, you know, apartment complex that we have plenty in town. So I seen that that one is gonna be a group, uh, a great partnership with them is the, um, the plan is to, how to restore, how to, uh, upgrade those old, uh, apartment units that we have in some area of the city. Um, so I hope that, I think they are gonna come with a plan. They are also changing, they have a new executive director. She was part of the meeting. So Rob Vicki is leaving, but the new executive director is Karen Kanak and she also was part of the meeting. So, um, so that one was good to see the new leader of the organization that came, you know, it was a virtual meeting, but they, they, they're very happy, um, that Fitchburg decided to join. Um, but, um, I think there is, there will be a plenty opportunity and working with them and, and to also to, I think, personally, I would like to see, uh, an approach working more on the old units, you know, redevelopment, all of that, stock of housing, um, should be great. So, we'll see.
All right. Anyone else?
Like a roll call?
Right, do we need to? Right, do we need to?
I'd like it.
All right, I guess we're going to roll call, please.
Alder Radifrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter? Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell? Seven one, motion carried.
All right, excellent. Anything else for SITA, Julia?
Yes, um, also want to mention that there's going to be, um, an opening, um, one of the seats, um, um, so I think that person is leaving in May, so um, it would be nice if people are listening from, especially from District One and Three. We need more, if you, you know, if you have a background, uh, and, you know, and, and you want to join the committee, send your application. Uh, we have enough people from District Two in the committee right now. So this is what I think that we need someone from District One or Three to have a balance, um, in the commission, so, and we also had a presentation from To- uh, from Wade Thompson about the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, especially the, the hub, um, um, the project with, um, Gulf, um, area. So I think that Joyce, I don't know if Joyce uh, sent an email to all of you with a link, uh, or maybe we're going to bring Wade to one of the committee or the whole to do the presentation about uh, this, um, the North Fish Hatch Road hub, uh, hub. So, uh, and it was a great presentation, great project. Um, so, and then we have, um, we have, um, Bill Balky was part of the meeting talking about all the road reconstruction and in the city, so um, I don't know when it's going to be the next one, but it was a very productive meeting.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, Eagan Rural Affairs, Randy?
Uh, no, we're working on a meeting.
All right, let's see here, EMS, Shannon? Oh, I think that was no report, but I can't hear you. You're muted?
I'm unmuted now, sorry. Um, we don't have a meet, we didn't have a meeting this month, so, nothing yet.
All right, uh, Bicycle Committee, Joe? Joe? Are you Bike Committee? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the last thing that you said.
Oh, uh, do you have a report for Bike Committee?
Um, no, they're currently rescheduling, um, to find a meeting, so I believe the meeting will be this Thursday.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, Tree Advisory?
No report.
All right, Landmarks Preservation, Shannon?
No report.
All right, Census Complete Call Committee, Dorothy?
Um, nothing real new, the city has done pretty much as much as it can to getting ready. Now, we're kind of waiting on on the federal government to wait for all this to ease up so we can do more.
I think we're above average in response, but still got a long ways to go. All right, what about? I can come back, it's for Housing Advisory, are you, you good? I think there's a meeting coming up for Housing Advisory.
Um, the only note that I've got is thanks for the resolution above. So for the housing.
All right, good, thank you. All right, Fans Committee, Julia?
Okay, so we met today, um, we approved the detailed review of all check issued, check number one-two-zero-seven-zero-two-dash-one-two-zero-seven-five-five dated April first, twenty-twenty to April fifteenth, twenty-twenty. Total is six hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred ninety-five with seventy-five cents.
All right, anything else? All right. Uh, Personnel, I know that you haven't met, Dorothy had to step out for a second, that they have not met yet. Uh, Public Safety, uh, Sarah, anything you want to report?
No report, we've not met.
All right. Then moving on to Mayor's Report, a few things. First, I found out today that our Fitchrona EMS has been selected for the Wisconsin EMS for Children twenty-twenty Pediatric Champion of the Year Award recipient. Uh, this is actually the second year in award, award roll that they've won this. And this award is granted to an EMS crew or station that has displayed outstanding care for a child in a med- medical emergency or trauma event, demonstrated exceptional effort in influencing development of pediatric training or quality improvement programs, worked towards creating injury and prevention efforts. This is in regards to a mass casualty incident that involved a motor vehicle crash that impacted ten individuals, including six children, in March of twenty-nineteen. The life-saving decisions and actions made by Fitchrona EMS are a model for other EMS agencies across the state. Thank you so much for prioritizing pediatric patients and your leadership in our state. Once COVID is over, I'm going to have them come in to a council meeting as well to recognize these people. But, let's see here. It's is, again, they're just kind of saying, you know, congratulations and echo that they say we're very lucky to have such brave and caring individuals uh, in our community and so thank you Fitchrona EMS and congratulations again. Uh, the people who were involved in that incident were Dale Dow, Ross Williams, Andrew Jensen, and Jennifer Ross. So thank you, all of you for that and congratulations on being recognized. Couple other things. Um, first, just, uh, as you're keeping your calendar, over the summer, we usually cancel one of the council meetings, that's going to be the first meeting in July. Typically, in our two meetings, the first one of the month is a little bit shorter and with the Fourth of July holiday around then, thought that might be a good one to cancel. And so if you're planning vacations and things like that, we are going to cancel the first meeting in July. So I want to make sure you knew that. And let's see, a few other things. I just wanted to let you know, for those who were in council last year, one of the things we had approved was the Badger Books and those are for the elections and I know that Tracy had mentioned that they were tremendous help this year, especially with all the stuff that was happening this spring. And I believe you said it saved us staff at least a week of time having those things, so I want to make sure people knew that, hey, it did what we wanted and really helped staff, so, you know, thank you for that. As if you've been in City Hall at all, we have taken the opportunity to paint all the walls and do some upkeep here in City Hall since we don't have any people here, so that's great. Thank you for, uh, our maintenance staff for doing that. And, um, Julia mentioned there is an opening in SITA, I did get the email today from our, one of our residents who's moving to Florida and so he had to resign his position, so there is an opening in SITA if you know anyone who'd be interested in that. Uh, especially with the business background, uh, they have a lot of community development, development people on there, but business background would be great. We also have a zoning board of appeals opening as well, so that'd be another one that we're trying to also fill. And other than that, hopefully you watched the video from staff kind of explaining who they are, what they do. And, let's see, other than that, I think that's all I got for today. Uh, so we can do all the reports, I will start here in the room and I'll start with Dorothy, do you have anything for all the reports?
Oh, just construction, um, be very aware when you're in construction areas, slow down, stay away from your phones, et cetera, et cetera, all those kind of things.
All right, thank you, Gabrielle?
Uh, so Alder Radifrata and I are actually going to do an impromptu park cleanup in McKee Farms Park this weekend, uh, Saturday, starting at eleven AM, right? Julia, is that, is that right, eleven AM? No, I don't remember when our event is.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, ten thirty, there's a Facebook event, um, for it. So please join us, we're going to provide trash bags and work gloves, um, and we'll stay very far apart and spread out, but I think it'll be fun to get out, outside. Um, also, I just wanted to thank, uh, thank the city staff and the mayor for, um, really making my transition out of the council very easy and feel like I have a lot of support and a lot of resources and my questions are getting answered way faster than, uh, than they need to because you guys are so on top of it, so thank you all so much. I'm really excited to, to dig in and, and get started. I have a, for, for those District Two residents that are watching, I do have a Facebook page and a website, gabriellegerhart.com and also I'll be starting an e-newsletter, uh, for updates, um, for the district, so if anyone's interested in, in reaching out to me through those, uh, those venues, I would be happy to hear from you.
All right, thank you. Tom, report?
I just have a couple things here, it happens with my neighbors and constituents, do we know when the dog park's going to be open?
Pat, do you know when it's going to open?
Yeah, I have a, I actually have a meeting, uh, tomorrow to, uh, check out the condition of the grass. It's been delayed due to some, uh, wet conditions, I don't know if today helped at all, but, um, uh, odds are it'll be open here, uh, in the next couple of weeks. We're hoping for a little bit of a dry spell so that the grass takes and gets a little thicker.
What happened is the residents are calling City Hall and they don't know. You mean just want, when you find out when that's going to be, would you tell the front desk?
We will.
When they answer the?
We will and, uh, we'll keep that posted on our website, too.
Uh, we get it all over the city, but, uh, obviously speeding problems on Wayland Road. Um, if, they just think it's a racetrack, you know, and I know what's happening here, we're going to get a lot of people taking different routes because of the construction. And between Wayland Road and Seminole High, it's Seminole Highway, if you just, uh, Pat, would pass that on to the police chief. And the last one, um, some neighbors wanted to know because of what we're going through with the coronavirus, if, and this is for another day between the mayor and the administrator and whoever. It's good for Mike Zimmerman, too. If we could have a city parade, and I get this, where the fire department's involved, the police department's involved, cables involved, highway department's involved, and they just go to different districts and go through the street, if nothing else, people come outside and the attitude, I thought it was a good attitude. Really thanking the staff for all they do and at the same time, it brings people out of the front of their house. Maybe not the back where they never come out or... And if they could just come out maybe and, um, clap? I don't care, give them a soda, um, whatever it may be, but just thanking staff. And somebody brought this to my attention, Middleton did it. I don't know about Sun Prairie, but Middleton had done something like that and it was kind of a, um, I know it'd have to be coordinated, don't get me wrong, it's not for maybe today or tomorrow, but in the future, um, you know, you probably won't get every street in all, all the districts, but something to think about. And you could even ride around in your own car and put on the side.
I'll find a nicer car than what I have.
Whatever you want, I don't care what you put on the side of it, you know.
I'll try and find something a little nicer.
Don't ask me if I'm riding in the car, but, you know.
Thought you were going to drive me.
Yeah. Just something to think about.
All right, we can look into that.
And it gets the community out, you know, that's all. I'm talking about in their driveway.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about in the park or on the street where there's fifty people, I didn't say that.
All right, Randy?
A great idea, Tom. Um, I just want to echo Gabriella's comments as well. I have nothing to report, but other than, uh, the transition has been wonderful. Tracy has, uh, done a terrific job of moving along forms that we need to fill out and complete and, and just, uh, you just made it easy and the mayor as well to make, uh, uh, the transition. And we have a lot to learn, a lot to learn. It's a little overwhelming at times, but, uh, we'll get there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, Julia?
Yeah, so I want to mention that I am very concerned about people are going out, they are not doing social distancing in our parks. So what is, uh, um, what is our position as a city enforcement? Um, I know that, you know, people use wearing masks when they go outside, you know, you know, it's, it's going to get warmer and people are going to come out by millions, you know, and metaphorically, you know what I mean, but, you know, I saw last weekend and I was very concerned because people are not doing the social distancing and, you know, uh, I, I understand, you know, that we want to be out. Um, you know, but what is the city position about this, you know, I mean, um, I don't know, I want to, I want to tell that my neighbors and my resident in District Two that they go to the McKiffan Park, Tower Hill Parks, and the other park in Mid Street. You know, it's okay to go out, but please try maintain your distance. Um, try to wear a mask, possible, you know, um...
Pat, can you speak to this or have Chief Brecklin reply to the council, maybe, it's up to you?
Yeah, uh, we can have the chief give a written reply, but basically what we're doing is just what you said, we're encouraging people, uh, if they're out and about to, uh, maintain social distancing, obviously that doesn't, uh, I mean, if there's family members, you really don't know who is congregating in larger groups, family members are, are welcome to do that. Um, people from different homes, um, are encouraged to social distance. Same thing goes for grocery stores and everything else, so we're encouraging people, but we're not arresting anybody for, uh, not maintaining six-foot distance at this point in time, but, uh, the chief can give you, uh, his position in writing.
Anything else, Julia?
No, that's it.
All right, how about Sarah?
No report.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, um, so if anybody is watching, or if anybody gets up early enough, um, tomorrow at seven-thirty AM, um, tune into ninety-three point one, uh, Jams. The Mad Town Mom Squad will be having, um, fun-to-do tips during Safer at Home for your kids. Um, I mention it because one of the, um, presenters is Dr. Jasmine Sabata. Uh, is actually a Fish, Fishburg resident and she'll be joined with, by her, uh, seven-year-old daughter. Um, I think in the era of social distancing, uh, it's really important to also focus on, you know, the positives and say, you know, what, what types of things, uh, can we do to encourage um, our families to be able to be safe, but also to be able to have fun, enjoy one another's, you know, company and, and be able to sort of make the most out of it. Um, also to Julia's last point, um, I think, and, and to Wade, or to, um, sorry, to Pat, um, you know, it's, it's also really important to, to, you know, not, to ensure we're not, um, you know, having police contact as a result of this and that we're encouraging as much as we can because, you know, every, everyone's sort of got different circumstances as to, you know, what their situation is and, um, you know, why, um, it's happening as well. I've also seen it at, um, you know, the, the park on, uh, on Janeway as well, so I, I have, I also have concerns about it as well, so I'm, uh, I, I think in the youth development space, um, there's some really good things work, um, being worked on by, you know, a lot of youth-serving organizations to, um, ensure that youth's mental health needs are met, um, that they're feeling a sense of belonging, that they're, you know, connected with schools, um, you know, and, and they're, I guess, have the tools as much as possible to be able to not social, or to be able to practice social distancing. Um, and, and that also comes in collaboration with, you know, public health and with, um, you know, our nonprofit leaders as well, so, um, you know, I, I'm glad to see that work move forward and I just wanted the council to be sort of aware of those efforts.
All right, thank you, and Shannon?
Um, nothing.
All right, great. Then we'll move along to new business and first up, um, I don't know, maybe Julia, do you want to do a resolution for this here and Wade, I know you're here, if you want to come up, I don't know if you want to present anything or not, but we'll have Julia do a resolution first, or a motion?
I move approval of resolution R dash eighty-one dash twenty, a resolution to approve the twenty-twenty funding awards for the Healthy Neighborhood Grant Program.
Sorry, second? Saying about Dorothy, did Finance approve?
So this one is, we're, um, approving tonight the, um, awards for the non-for-profit, they are participating in the twenty-twenty and Healthy Neighborhood Initiative program, uh, so I want to invite this Wade there.
He is here, yeah, Wade, come on up.
Wade is going to do, um, a presentation, a summary of which are the organization that we are going to award, the amount, um, so where they are loca- and where they're going to do this, um, uh, in which areas and neighborhood they're going to be performing this, uh...
in which areas and neighborhood they're gonna be performing this services.
I'm just gonna keep it very brief tonight. I'm gonna try to share my screen with you.
Hopefully had a chance to read through everything in the packet. And if you have any questions, we'll get to those in a second as well. This is the third year, I believe, that we've had the Healthy Neighborhoods program.
I'll need to share my screen.
Green button at the bottom.
Green button on the bottom. Not seeing a green button.
One second, please.
Do I need to run the app?
Wade, I have it up. I can just share my screen if that would be faster.
Sure, if we can. Just give us one minute here, maybe. There we go. Perfect, thank you. Yep, got it. I can take it from here, thanks.
Alright.
Alright, thanks for your patience. Getting there. Alright, so just very quickly, I wanna run through recommendations for 2020 Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program Funding Awards. So just, I'm probably gonna jump around a bit, given the new members on the council, but basically I wanna talk just kind of how we came to the process of recommending applications for funding awards, and then we'll, I'll kind of give you a brief summary overview of those applications. So maybe just first off, kind of big picture, Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. We use the acronym HNI for our new council members. Essentially, we're talking kind of a more strategic approach to deliver services and things to our residents in three of our northern neighborhoods. So moving west to east, we've got our Verona Road West neighborhood on the west side of Verona Road. We've got our allied Belmar Renaissance on the park area just to the east of Verona Road. And then we've got the north Fish Hatchet Road neighborhood as well. So moving into one piece of the HNI, that's our grant program. I think, as Aaron mentioned, it's been around for a couple of years. The planning department has overseen it since 2019. So this is our second year overseeing it as a department. We did receive 10 applications in 2020. Once again, demand did exceed supply. We basically got $89,000 in funding requests of those, of those funds. We had one application that wasn't eligible to apply. So essentially, we had $79,000 worth of really good applications that we were looking to fund. We only had $68,000 available to fund those applications. So kind of where the rubber hits the road here is we did recommend, the committee did recommend eight applications for funding. I wanna be very clear that staff fully supports the committee recommendations. And we'll talk more about that process of staff and committee. So basically, kind of a four-step process. First step is staff receives the applications. We make recommendations based on kind of a standard application review form, as well as kind of the big picture HNI goals that we'll talk about. So that was completed in early March. Then our committee did meet. They kind of reviewed staff recommendations and made their own recommendations. And that was also completed in March. And then we're here tonight. This is the first year that council is making the final funding award decisions. So you guys will be able to make awards at your discretion. And then, once the decision is made tonight, we will announce those awards in the very near future. So this is just one tool we use to review the applications, kind of a standard application review form that we subject all the applications to. We also kind of look at more of a soft, soft analysis in terms of the HNI big picture. And when we talk HNI big picture, we're really talking about how do we increase communication, collaboration, and identification of common goals among all our neighborhood and community partners, as well as the city? How do we be proactive, comprehensive, and strategic, and integrated, and not reactive, focusing on tactics only, and also not being siloed? And I think most importantly, the idea is how do we kind of move this initiative along while premising on community engagement, as well as neighborhood engagement? So again, city staff reviews the applications, the grant committee reviews the applications. I think it's important to point out, on that committee, we have two alders, Alder Crowsey and Alder Rodafrada. We also have representatives from our neighborhood on that committee as well. And again, you just see some of the pieces that we look at as we review the applications. So moving quickly into kind of the recommendations, again, I'll, I can certainly provide more detail on applications if desired, but I think I'll just kind of give the big picture here. So this is our recommendations for 2020, the committee recommendations. And they essentially mirrored staff recommendations, so that's a good sign, I think. But essentially, a $10,000 award to Badger Prairie Needs Network. This is a food pantry group. Big Brothers Big Sisters, a great reputable youth mentoring organization. We're recommending a $9,000 award. Boys and Girls Club, I think folks know that organization, recommending an award to them as well. Catholic Multicultural Center is doing a really innovative culinary training program and also workforce job placement. Girls on the Run is kind of a youth empowerment group. They're asking for a small award. Latino Academy of Workforce Development is really about developing the Latino workforce. New Bridge is kind of a senior center-focused group. They are partnering with our senior center for this project proposal. And then Unidos is actually a group that focuses on sexual and domestic abuse support. So again, we think a really worthy organization. I do wanna point out, again, $68,000 in total, and our max award is $10,000. So you're seeing a lot of, a lot of max awards there. And then I think this is just kind of a nice summary slide, and again, this stuff is all in your packet. But the top, the top box there kind of shows the distribution of recommended applications throughout our three neighborhoods. And I think there's a real good distribution there. Just some historical context, in years past, we saw a lot of applications in the north Fish Hatchet Road area. This year, we're seeing, I think, some better, better distribution in other neighborhoods. So I'm really encouraged to see that. And then in terms of project categories, again, the bottom graph there, the bottom chart, we've got kind of our six different categories. Abuse support, youth and adult education, food insecurity, youth mentoring, senior support, and workforce development. And again, I think you see a nice equitable distribution of funding awards in those various categories as well. So with that, again, kind of a quick and dirty, and I can certainly provide more detail if the council would like. But those are the recommendations that the committee is making this year.
Alright, questions, comments, anything like that? Yeah, Gabriella?
I said this in the finance committee meeting as well, but I thank so much the staff for putting together the packet. There was a lot of detail in there about the different proposals, and I found it very interesting to read up on the organizations. I think it's a really impressive group of organizations that are gonna do work in the community. And it's interesting that we have both people that are returning partners and then also some new partners. And I was really impressed to see, I loved seeing the array of different services that the organizations provide to the community. So I was very impressed with what I saw and very pleased with the potential impact that this is gonna have on the, on the city.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, seeing nothing. Then we go ahead and vote. All in favor of approving the HNI grant, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. Alright, those are approved. Thank you, Wade. Alright, Julia, do you wanna do a resolution for this next one?
Yes, before I, I, I do the resolution, I want to explain that this resolution, it was a confusion in the package. So we didn't discuss this, this resolution in finance. It's coming directly to the council, okay?
Yep.
Because it was a...
Yeah, there's a mistake on the agenda, I know.
A mistake on the, when they put together the agenda, okay? So, so, so I move approval of resolution R-82-20, tandem plow truck equipment.
Second.
Alright, that's seconded.
So I don't know if Pat can explain where this?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have Mike's notes here, so I'll go through those. The plow truck chassis, which is basically the meat and potatoes of the truck, was approved on resolution R-3720. The plow, dump body, wing, tailgate spreader, and hydraulic system is purchased separately. The project was posted on Quest, which is a bid site, to obtain bids. We received two bids. The Monroe Truck bid was a lower bid, however, didn't meet some of the specifications. Staff recommends Madison Truck bid with the options of a total of $118,546. The current price of the chassis is $107,800. The chassis plus the equipment totals $226,439. The total in the budget for the next plow truck is 400 and, for the next two plow trucks, is $450,419. $210,000 from the Fish Hatchery Road project, plus $204,500 from the Plow Replacement CIP. Plus an additional $42,900 from the trade-in from the last truck we had. The total divided by two, $228,709, which demonstrates that the budget is adequate for the purchase. Monroe bid had a lighter plow, 201, instead of a 304 stainless steel, less the brine capacity also. So the recommendation is, as sub-stated by our Public Works Department, it's important that this, you know, due to the mistake that we made on the agenda and it didn't go to finance, it's still important that we go through the approval process at council, and if you wish to proceed with this. Due to the timing of the project, it could be pushed back due to the COVID situation. The staff and the labor out there in this world isn't at a high volume. So we're still looking at a late November, early December delivery if approved tonight. And as many of you know, we had a six-inch snowfall in October of last year. So hopefully, we don't deal with that again, but staff recommends approval.
I think that's the hardest thing to realize, is how long it takes to get this set up and built and delivered to us. And, you know, we'd like to have finance and these other committees weigh in, but that pushes it back further, and if we don't get this until January 1, we might miss a lot of snowfall.
And the good news is, I mean, it's never the good news when you miss a committee meeting, but at least all three committee members are represented on this body.
Alright, questions?
Pat?
Yeah, Julia, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Can you explain to the new alders why do we are buying an extra plow this year?
Yes, we're preparing for two things. One is the Fish Hatchery Road, beginning in 2020, one will be plowed by the city and not the county anymore. And that's the stretch from, I'm sorry, 2022. The winter of 2021, 22. The stretch from McKee Road north to the Belt Line will be plowed by the city. Secondly, we've added many additional roads in the city. As you'll note, the Terra Vesta neighborhood, Fahy Fields, Stoner Prairie, Cory Vista, just to name a few. All these additional roads mean additional plowing and hopefully additional staff sometime. So that's the reason. We're also going to be obtaining, annexing the town of Madison in our northeast quadrant of our community. So all that adds up to the need for more equipment.
Any further questions at all? Alright, and all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. Let's see, this next one here, maybe since Sarah wasn't at Public Works, maybe someone in finance wanna do this one approval? Julia, aye?
I move approval of resolution R-86-20, preliminary assessment resolution for the 2020 street and parks improvement.
Second.
Alright, and did Public Works approve, Pat?
The meeting was canceled.
Oh, okay, that's right. And then did finance approve?
Yes.
Alright, they did? Good. Alright, go ahead, Pat.
As part of the 2020 Street and Park Improvement Project, the curb and gutter, sidewalk, and driveway installments shall be assessed according to the city assessment policy. Staff has done some preliminary work and believe that waivers of the special assessment hearing will be obtained from all accessible properties. It should be noted that due to the financial impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic, the special assessment shall be deferred without interest for two years. The deferral does not apply if the property is sold or developed. If the assessed property is sold or developed, the assessment becomes due at the time of sale and/or development.
Anything else? Alright, any questions at all on this? This is something we do pretty regularly.
And this is the first step in the process, so you'll see numbers as we get closer to completing the project.
Alright. Tom?
I think you already said it, Pat, but in reference to homeowners in this COVID-19, people losing jobs, people maybe in a financial problem, I did hear you say something about until the property is sold or they, we waive some of that. Is that standard, what we've done in the past? And if it is, we should even give them more time, don't you think? I mean, this is a different type of deal right now. And I'm, my days in Public Works, I don't remember. I know we give them a little time, but my comment is I think we should give them more time. And are we doing that?
We are.
Okay.
We are. We, we give, people get to pay when they want, whether they wanna pay upfront or they can pay over a time period of six or seven years. I can't remember exactly what it is for, for the streets, six or seven years. They get to pay over that period with a slight bit of interest. What we're allowing during this, because of the pandemic, is we're allowing the payment to be deferred without interest for the first two years. So, so that is allowable within our ordinance.
Alright, anything else? Alright, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? Alright, that one's approved. Let's see, maybe, Sarah, you wanna do this one for us?
Sure, so I make a motion to approve resolution R-8720, accepting subdivision improvements in the plat of the first addition to North Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, sent by Randy. And much of a lot of people know where North Park is, Pat?
Yep, North Park is actually the Addison, located at Sain and Lacy. The subdivision improvements for Lot 6 of the plat, as required by the subdivision improvement agreement, have been inspected and conditionally approved. There are some punch list items that are required by the developer and the contractor in place, but our building inspector and our public works director concur that we can accept the public improvements at this time.
This is something we do with all new developments at some point.
Yep, yeah, so the public improvements for your new alders that aren't aware of those things that the city accepts, the contractors or the developers would put in the road, the curb, the sidewalk, water, sewer, et cetera. Once that's inspected and completed to the satisfaction of our different departments, we accept it, and that's what you would be doing tonight. And then it becomes city property.
Alright, Julia?
Yes, I have a question. This one is the, this one is a new development inside the Addison? Because I saw that they are already building something there. Is it the same one?
That's correct. It's actually the same building. They'll be opening in three different phases. There's firewalls built so that the building can be opened in three different stages. These would be the, these would be the improvements associated with the first phase of that building.
Oh, with the first phase, okay.
I know this is the last apartment building in that development. I don't know if they're gonna develop the single-family homes or something else, but this is the last of the apartments for this.
That's, that's correct. This apartment building, and then I believe they'll be building a pool and poolhouse, too.
Yep. Alright, anything else?
How many units are in this one?
I'm, I don't know exactly. I do know that, I believe it was filled. The leases are filled, and I know there's at least 40 units that are leased for May 1st. So I believe it's 40 units in this section.
I think it's more than that, actually. I think it's 100-something.
Or the whole building. Or the whole building.
I, well, it's two of their other buildings, and I think their other buildings have a hundred some in them.
But this is just a section of that building. So we can, we can get you the numbers, yeah.
Alright, anything else? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. And one last one, maybe someone on Finance?
I got it.
Alright.
I move to approve resolution R dash ninety-four dash twenty, preliminary assessment resolution for the northeast water main extension improvements.
Second.
Alright, saying by Randy, did Finance approve this?
Yes.
Alright, Pat, what's this one about?
Yeah, in order to improve system reliability, our water system, fur flows and water quality, the city will be installing water main on West Clayton Road from Sine, heading east through Highway fourteen corridor and along County Highway Trunk MM to Terra Vesta. West Clayton Road will be reconstructed as part of the resurfacing program after the installation of the water main. The preliminary assessment resolution authorizes staff to prepare a preliminary assessment report and to proceed with the special assessment process defined in our local ordinance. It should be noted that due to the financial impacts of COVID-nineteen pandemic, the special assessment shall be deferred without interest for two years. This deferral does not apply if the property is sold or developed. If the assessed property is sold or developed, the assessment becomes due at time of sale or redevelopment. Or development, I'm sorry.
I know this is connecting over to Terra Vesta, and it really improves the service and decreases the chances of any big problems getting water out to Terra Vesta and also the other neighborhoods around there, you know, that whole area.
Yeah, that's correct. It'll improve water quality in general because it'll be looped. The water will be looped. And secondly, it'll improve fire hydrant capacity.
Alright, any questions on this one at all? Alright, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. We already did number six. Our next council meeting is in a couple of weeks, on May twelfth. And the next committee, the whole meeting, will be on May twenty-seventh. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Saying by Tom, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Alright, we are adjourned at ten twenty-five.